There we go. Welcome to the 6:30, January 26, 2021 Titusville City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you read the rules to speak, please?
Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes, regardless of the number of items identified.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do I have a motion for the...approve the minutes? Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the special city council meeting on November 24, 2020, 10:30 a.m., last regular meeting, and November 24, 2020, 11:00 a.m. organization meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion. Vice Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call vote?
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. City Manager, just to reconfirm, we have no special presentations.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you very much. So with that, City Manager, would you please introduce the boards and commissions tonight?
Yes, sir. Before I do, we have two agenda items that are related. So staff would like to move Agenda Item 12A after 9C.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll need a motion and a vote on that.
Okay. A motion to make that move?
A motion to make that move.
And we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote?
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes. Okay. Move approved unanimously. Now, City Manager.
On to Item 6A, the Titusville Community Service Awards Select Committee. Mayor Diesel has appointed Herman Cole Jr. as the chair and Barry Russell of the Grove Church as clergy representative for the Titusville Community Service Select Committee. City Council is being requested to confirm their appointments.
And before we do, I would certainly like to add, I'm a bit of a rookie in this particular position, and I don't get to make such appointments very often, and maybe this is the only one I get all year. And I think I am very proud to say that two very fine young men are my appointees. I hear a giggle over there, sir.
Yeah, one of them is young.
But Herman Cole is an outstanding...I was going to say young man again, but...young man, and certainly Barry Russell, who is one of the pastors at The Grove. And I must say, he actually played football for me a few years ago. So I appreciate that, and I need a motion to approve them.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Mr. Herman Cole and Mr. Barry Russell to the Titusville Community Service Awards Select Committee.
And I need a second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I need to call cards on this? Okay.
We have no cards.
Okay. Thank you very much. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes. Thank you. Passes unanimously, and I appreciate their service. City Manager.
On to Item 6B, which is the Titusville Flag and Memorial Committee. The presenter couldn't be present, so we're requesting that the Titusville Flag and Memorial Committee's semi-annual report be accepted by council. No action required.
No action required. Do we need a vote?
No.
Okay, so we do accept that, and I appreciate that. And we move on to C.
Yes, sir. The Item 6C is the Historic Preservation Board's semi-annual report, and we do have a presenter for this. No actions required by council.
Name and your famous address.
I am Tony Shifalo, proud owner of the Norwood House, 715 Tropic Street, one of the 12 locally designated historic structures in Titusville.
I told you, famous.
It will be famous now. Thank you for having me tonight. I've been before you many times presenting status quo development rulings in an effort to preserve Titusville's natural resources, our tree canopy, parish park, and the Indian River Lagoon. But tonight, I'm here to celebrate the efforts by the Historic Preservation Board to preserve Titusville's historic, natural, and man-made resources. According to the city's strategic plan, the actions of the HPB help further quality of life by enhancing the city's appearance and the city's economic development goal by our continuing efforts to promote and preserve the city's historic resources. Our semi-annual report is in your agenda packet. However, I would like to point out for public record several of our more important accomplishments and projects. During the past six months, the board has continued to research neighborhood conservation districts as a historic preservation tool, which will enable mature, settled neighborhoods to manage infill within defined neighborhood standards. We made contact with owners of historic properties located in the community redevelopment district to inform them of grant programs for historic building repair and beautification. We also proactively sent letters to significant residences and historic commercial buildings inviting the owners to designate their properties to the Titusville Historic Register. We facilitated the adaptive reuse of the historic Carter House on Granite Street into a boys' and girls' club, a project that is dear to everyone. The Historic Preservation Board revised the certification of appropriate...the certificate of appropriateness application, to be more specific regarding submittal items for requests involving demolitions and new construction within a designated historic district. Following the demolition of a contributing structure at 346 South Washington Avenue, we approved the proposed architectural plans for its replacement as appropriate and compatible with the downtown Commercial National Historic District. We provided support for nominations of historic citizens and buildings to national and state historic registers, and we're moving forward this spring with the grant for the historic walking and driving tour of the city in booklet and website form, which council approved and authorized. And for that, everybody's going to be very thankful. It's going to be a really nice project, the walking and driving tour.
Awesome.
Any questions?
I'd just like to say that I always enjoy watching you come up because you have a passion. You have a passion for this, and I totally appreciate that. And because of your passion and your group, I think you're getting things done that might not have gotten done without you. So with that being said, I just want to say thank you. And Vice Mayor Nelson?
Oh, I apologize. But yes, I agree with him. You got...I've seen the pamphlet for the walking tour. It was great. It was just great. Very interesting, very easy to read, just fun. So thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a great project, and we're really looking forward to moving on it. Thank you.
And that's why it works. Thank you. Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, sir. On to the Historic Preservation Board appoint one alternate member. Currently, there's one vacancy for an alternate member with a term to expire on October 31, 2022. There's currently one application on file for your consideration. Ms. Jean Carom...Caromanna Collins has expressed her willingness and desire to serve on this commission as an alternate member with an unexpired term to expire on October 31, 2022. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to say a word, please? Thank you so much.
Jean Caromanna Collins. My name's really not that hard. It's just long. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members. I come before you again. My service to the city of Titusville was short-lived on the code enforcement board, so I'm back to get on another board. So at the time I applied, that was the only opening, so I'm happy to put my name forward for that or wherever I am needed.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Member Jordan?
I know. I just want to make the motion once it's done.
And Vice Mayor?
I'm just going to say, I think you're a wonderful person, and we appreciate you serving.
Absolutely. And the fact that you're here after the previous board, I appreciate that. There you are. You're just...you're wanting to serve, and it's obvious. So, Member Jordan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move that we approve Ms. Jean Caromanna Collins. There you go.
And Vice Mayor?
I would definitely second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
On to Item 6E, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Appoint three regular members and one alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commission with terms to expire on January 31, 2023. The terms of regular member, Ms. Joyous Parrish, Mr. Joseph Richardson, and Mr. Dwight Severs expire on January 31, 2021. All of these members have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for another two-year term, expiring on January 31, 2023. The term of one alternate member, Ms. Susan Noel Copeland, also expires on January 31, 2021. She does not wish to seek reappointment at this time. In addition, there are three applications on file for your consideration. Mr. Dan Anton, Mr. Christopher Childs, and Mr. Woody Rice have all expressed their willingness and desire to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, either as a regular member or as an alternate member. Mr. Woody Rice currently serves on the Titusville Environmental Commission with an unexpired term to expire on November 30, 2021. If he is not appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, he would like to continue to serve on the Titusville Environmental Commission. And Counsel, we also received a late application for this position. Mr. Robert Johnston, you have his application on the dais.
Okay. And we have...I know we have the returning members who are up, so I would like to give you guys an opportunity to say a word. And Mr. Richardson, I'm going to go ahead and start with you.
Mayor Diesel, Vice Mayor Nelson, and members of the city council, it's an honor to serve as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. As some of you may know, I had a stroke almost eight years ago while serving as a supply chain manager at the Aniston Chemical Weapons Disposal Facility. My responsibilities included Aniston, as well as Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and Ematilla, Oregon. They represented over $3 billion worth of property purchases and subcontract. I have tried to serve as an example to others that having a physical disability does not mean you're incapable of serving the community. When I was elected to the Titusville City Council at the age of 21 in 1977, I sat in Joe Robinson's seat. Reverend Harry Lee served as the assistant to the city manager, Norm Hickey. His job was to talk to the residents of what was then the Sandpoint Trailer Park and encourage them to live somewhere else and possibly move their trailers to different facilities. He was the man with that motto on the back wall. Let us disagree without becoming disagreeable. That's the way our present Planning and Zoning Commission works. We represent a diverse group, and while we may disagree with each other, we respect each other and each other's opinions. We have four new regular members with less than one year of service. In fact, if you include Mr. Severs and I, the average length of service is 15 months. It takes that long to understand all the zoning classifications and the difference between the land use plan amendment and a conditional use permit. So I would respectfully ask to be reappointed to P and Z. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Severs, if you'd come up and give what I will call a close to three-minute talk.
For the record, my name is Dwight Severs. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to serve the city of Titusville and the citizens of Titusville on the Planning and Zoning Commission. You have a number of qualified applicants for this important position. I currently serve as the longest member on the commission, currently serve as a chairman. Have only been there two...about...well, it's less than two and a half years. As a chairman, I would like to respectfully indicate to you and say, we have a number of very qualified applicants presently on the commission, and I would respectfully urge you to reappoint them because they deserve to be reappointed. I've requested my reappointment for many reasons, for another term, primarily because of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, the TRIO ordinance, the LID ordinance, and many other pending projects. Many of you may know my background, but to recap in a short manner, as you may know, I served for 40 years as a city attorney, five years as the city assistant city attorney or city attorney emeritus. I've been involved in reviewing, drafting, implementing at least three comprehensive planning processes, drafted countless ordinances representing the city in numerous matters, including sewer and water system expansions over the years. I've drafted legislation that was adopted and passed by the Florida Legislature, attended a bill signing ceremony with Governor Scott at his request. I've been recognized by the Florida Supreme Court for my legal aid work in helping the poor. In addition, I authored an article that appeared in the Florida League of Cities magazine dealing with impact fees. I've served with at least 50 different council members, seven different city managers, and for a short time, served as the interim city manager at the request of the city council. I've served with many diverse individuals. Needless to say, council members can be diverse in their views and points of view. I have no conflict of interest or preset agenda. Upon my retirement in 2013, I desired to try to give back to the community, serve my church, served another organization. When 40 days of generosity came through the community, my wife and I decided to donate substantially to the Splash Park in memory of our son because we love Titusville, love the community, and wanted the children of the community to have a Splash Park. I strongly believe in our form of government and its checks and balances systems as such. During my time on commission, I have only missed one meeting because of illness, and I appreciate the opportunity I've had over the last few days to speak with each one of you individually. And I appreciate your frankness and your willingness to listen to me and appreciate your concerns and certainly take those to heart and look forward to working together with city staff and the city council on future issues. I believe we can all work together, understand one another as the advisory board to the city. I have adopted the practice of preparing a short number of questions in advance of the meeting to provide to staff so that they're not necessarily surprised by some of the questions. And I've tried to make sure that we try to provide to you clear and concise motions to pass on to you. Yes, we as members love the city. We desire to serve. We do ask questions, and we look forward to serving on behalf and on your behalf in the future. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are these lights now for him? I got Member Jordan, Member Robinson. Member Robinson, you want to ask a question?
Oh, my lights on? No.
Okay. TMI, TMI.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Severs. Ms. Parrish?
My name is Joyous Parrish. I live at 1136 Riverside Drive, Titusville. I've enjoyed serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like very much to continue to serve if possible. If however you got to dump somebody, dump me because those two guys that spoke before me deserve to continue the work that they're doing. And I'll just be honest with you, with the three of us have had a wonderful time getting to know each other in the meetings. And if there's anything I know about them is they work very, very hard to educate themselves on the issues, to prevent...to present valid questions. And as Mr. Severs has said probably more than once, I'm the troublemaker because I'm the new kid who's got more things to learn than anybody. But the learning curve has been steep, and I am willing to continue the task. We get paid so much that it's important to me that I continue to work really hard for you all because my goal is to be the best resource that you have. If you know I've asked questions, then you know I've done my best to figure out what you need to know to answer those questions.
Thank you. Hold on. We have a question, Vice Mayor.
We have a question. Joyous, don't go anyplace.
What?
Don't go anyplace.
Oh, you have questions?
You shorted us.
I don't...most people want me to shut up.
I've heard that. I've heard that. But right now, I want you to talk.
Okay. What would you like me to talk about?
You have a really great background for this board, and you mentioned not a word of it.
Well, I was here so recently, I didn't want to offend anyone and suggest that you can't remember that background.
Then we might be a little seen up.
But I'll repeat it. I was an administrative law judge for 31 years for the state of Florida. I handled all kinds of cases, including environmental cases. We did...I did water quality cases, air quality cases, school board cases, you name it, hospital cases. I did them all. Before that, I worked as a county attorney and a city assistant attorney, basically under Mr. Severs. He allowed me to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
And you did that for how long?
I did it for a little while, but I'm...since I'm...I'm really, you know, since I got the state job at such a tender age, I'm really not as old as I look. But I mean, seriously, I've done my best to try to educate myself. This...everything that we did 40 years ago is different now, so I really don't want to rest on what I was able to do for the city 40 years ago or 35 years ago or whenever it was, maybe.
Are you telling me that you're seen up?
No, it's just that the way we do things is different now. When I was...when I worked for the city, we didn't have the, you know, the plans that you all are required to follow now. You didn't...we didn't have the budgeting issues that you have and the different...you've just got a ton of stuff on your plate, and you really need to have commissions and boards that you can rely on. And hopefully, I'm one of those persons. Any other questions before I...
I see none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So those are the three who are presently on the board. Are there those who are here? Yeah, and there's somebody here. Are there...and I know there are. I'm not going to point you out, but feel free to come on up and give us your name and address. And I use the word short spiel.
Sure. I don't like talking a lot, so. My name's Christopher Childs, live at 5627 Enchanted Avenue. And I...my career has been healthcare IT consultant, and I've gone over the...all over the country. Mostly, I've worked with Johns Hopkins and senior signings, some of the best hospitals in the country, and I've...a lot of my work has been working with them. And I've, a lot of my work has been working with them to on the government regulations for like meaningful use so they can, you know, get some of that money to encourage adoption of electronic medical records and portability and things like that. So I'm used to reading a lot of, you know, government regulations and trying to get them, get doctors who are very not compliant to comply with those in some way, and even though they don't think it's meaningful use. But, so I, I've done a lot of that in, in my, in my career, and I've traveled a lot. And I, recently, a couple of years ago, I stopped traveling. So I was, you know, I was like, I want to focus on doing something, you know, for my city. And I love Titusville. I moved here, you know, in 2008 or so, or whatever. And I left and came back. But I, I love this city, and I want to do, you know, my part to help out. And, you know, I'm not a big fictional book reader, but I love technical manuals, and I'm a programmer, and I'm, I'm used to reading very technical things and putting it together. And so I appreciate, and I, it'd be my pleasure to serve on a board, any, any board really, but I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? I see none. Thank you. Next, come on up.
Good evening. Woody Rice, 505 Indian River Avenue. And my background's a little different from everyone. I start serving the city of Titusville back in 1987 on what used to be called the CRB, which no longer exists. By then, I ran for city council. And in 1990, I was thirty-two years old, started serving the city through a pretty tough times when we had the water and sewer issues with rebuilding our plants. And we actually had sixteen thousand dollars in our fund balance at the time. So it was very, very challenging. I learned a lot, learned a lot about my community. I actually learned a lot about myself. But during that time period, I was also serving on the TEC. I've served on the chamber. And then I had the fortune, fortunately, I was asked to come to work for the city as a city engineer and did that for nine years overseeing site development work. And at one time, I was running, overseeing the building department, code enforcement, site development, business tax receipts. So I was sort of overseeing an awful lot, worked closely with Mr. Severs and on a lot of things. And I guess the point, and then the other part of my career has always been on the private side doing site development work. So I've been doing that since, since the early nineties. I actually had a stint of five years doing environmental work and wetland surveys and stuff like that, go for tortoise relocations and stuff like that. So I have a pretty diverse background. The one thing that's unique about my background is that I've sat in your seat. I know what it feels like to sit up there. I know the social, political arena that you guys have to deal with every day. I also have been on staff. I know what staff goes through. I know their perspective. I know what they have to look at. I know how hard your staff works. Then I've been on the private side, so I understand that aspect of development. I know what's important. It's the marriage of all three of those that makes the system work. Is when we can marry all three. So that's the unique perspective that I will bring to P and Z. And I appreciate the opportunity to serve. But I will serve wherever this body thinks I'm best served to serve. I just thank you for the opportunity. And it looks like with the people I've spoken already, you have a very tough decision tonight.
Hold on one second, Vice Mayor.
Woody, I have a question for you. This is sort of the way I was thinking about this is that I would love to have you as a person who is a liaison between P and Z and the Environmental Commission. You have a lot of knowledge about stormwater, LID. You've got a lot of knowledge there. How would you feel about that? We don't have an open position right now where we could do that. But if we could do it in the future, would you be willing to do it?
You know, I, I will serve in any capacity this board wants. You know, I, I am still in business. Okay, so that would require three meetings a month if I served in both capacities. I'd be willing to give it a shot if that's your all's desire. And I'll do my best to serve to the full capacity that I can.
Do you feel like you'd be better on P and Z than on the Environmental Commission?
I do because I think I can, I can, you know, TEC is just more environmentally, looking at the environmental aspect. P and Z looks at a wider range of topics that some of my background might be very useful for, okay? Maybe even more useful.
Okay. Just had to ask.
Okay, any other questions? I see none. Next up? Hand it out over there. There you go.
My name is Robert Johnston also, so that's...
I don't even know that name.
Yeah, Robert Johnston.
I know.
Same, same person. That's Stan Johnston. And I've been here for over fifty years. I've got five generations of my family that's lived here. Five generations of my wife's family lived here. I love Titusville. Titusville is my hometown. And the big problem here is we have dishonesty in our, in our city government, big time. Errors, cover-ups, and I'm here to bring the truth. And just as I showed you, just from this handout that I just gave you, I don't think I need to give it to you again, but I gave it to the city clerk about this that exposes Mr. Stoffler's dishonesty. And it's like a smoking gun on that. But for example, I, I also sent you something else. I sent you an email that's regarding this matter. It's over thirty pages long. And I'll just read two little items here about regarding honesty. And that is number one, on this first page, it says, "City manager, city attorney, council, and some city staff ignore numerous numbered flood zones that are erroneous", which Brad wouldn't leave. "The only one corrected is for Baker subdivision for the Lomar of 2016." And Mr. Diesel, you're very familiar with that one.
I am.
"City is negligent not to correct the other flood zones." I mean, we got the whole, just plenty of them. "The public is the victim of city's negligence, errors, and cover-up of errors for over thirty-five years." Thirty-five years, negligence, thirty-five years. Number two is the resilient Titusville report, and Brad just dropped out. "Under the part authorship of Eddie Galindo and Brad Parrish is deliberately false." "They deliberately admitted information that I sent to them and discussed thoroughly, and that I discussed thoroughly with them, and the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council have presented to them at workshops." "The public, again, is the victim when the, when the big storms hit us." So we're, we have a lot of dishonesty issues. And as you know, I was also an engineer with the city of Titusville, with the county. And I've had, actually, I've had very good employment with them and rising in the ranks. For example, the city of Titusville, the highest paying in my particular setting, engineer. So I'd like you to consider me. I know you don't really like me. And that's, that's an understatement. But I'm here to serve the public, and I'd like to see my children and our grandchildren to grow up in something that's honest, that they can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else out there who is a candidate? Without that, council, are there any? I see, member Robinson.
I want to correct, Mr. Stan Johnston. I want to correct your last statement. Don't tell me I don't like you because this, that's not a true statement, okay?
It's not to Joe Robinson, sorry.
I'd sooner that you know that.
Thank you, sir. That's a good correction.
Okay, well, you correct that statement.
I apologize. That was, that was incorrect for you. Thank you, sir.
If we're going to correct, and you might not agree with me on that, Stan, but I like you too. You drive me nuts sometimes, but I like it. Now, Stan, you got me all confused. Let's go. Okay, any more comments? Member Jordan.
I have a last one.
Mayor, I think, you have a second?
I'm going to make the motion.
All right, okay, Vice Mayor Nelson.
Well, I wanted to sort of discuss it before we made a motion.
Okay.
And this is my thought. Joyous, Dwight, and Joe have a lot of experience. And with the things coming up in the next year or two, I would like to have, continue to have their expertise on planning and zoning. I would also like to have Woody's experience because he is very familiar with LID and a lot of the issues that will be coming up. So my thought is the three of them remain, and Woody goes as the alternate.
Okay, you, can I speak?
Yes, thank you for asking. Member Jordan.
Appreciate that for sure. I, I'd like to make that motion. I have some discussion after, after we get a second for it, but that's exactly what happened. I think Woody actually helped me a great deal because I really believe that P and Z could use some of his expertise. I actually like the idea of trying to intermingle the TEC with the P and Z. I think it would be really good for the city. So if it's okay with you, I would like to make the motion to have Dwight Severs, Joe Richardson, and Joyous Parrish. And Joyous, there's just something about you that I really like for you. I like your attitude and everything, so appreciate your sense of humor for sure. And have Mr. Woody Rice as the alternate.
Before we go forward with a second, I'd like to say I, and I like them all. I mean, the, the expertise out there. I think we're very blessed to have the three on there who are up, and I'm very glad to hear that motion. I also would have to say Woody Rice has got maybe a smattering of experiences that nobody else has, a variety of experiences. But I also want to talk briefly about Chris Childs, who I think has shown himself to be very committed to the city. And I would like him to get on a board. If this is not the board that will happen at this time, I would like to make sure that you don't go away. So with that said, we have a motion. I need a second.
I would like to do that second. And I would say that maybe over the next year, we can wear Mr. Rice down, and he'll agree to do both. We'll work on it.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
No discussion.
We need, we have discussion?
Yeah, I need to discuss.
Okay, more discussion.
One of the things I, I feel really good about is that, and my wife tells me all the time, I've got a good heart. There are some things out in the community talking about me saying I've got this conspiracy going on about what I'm trying to do with P and Z and trying to get rid of people. I will tell you categorically, I had some concerns about P and Z. And I, I'd like for you all to hear me, Mr. Dwight. And I had a really good discussion about my concerns. And he said if he got reappointed, that he would keep that in mind. And I'm sure you're going to stick to your word. But what concerned me as a council member was the tone of the meetings. The way I saw, looking at some of the videos of how staff was feeling, I looked at their faces, and I saw grimace on their faces a lot of times. In my mind, I'm sitting there, I didn't feel comfortable. And so I asked that the three who will be voted in again to really think about the staff and their position and the amount of work that they have to do for the city. Respect goes a long ways for everyone. And it is just, to me, as I look at some of the meetings, it's very uncomfortable to sit there and watch. And I know that staff is very dedicated to doing the right thing, very dedicated to wanting to please staff. There was a comment about there between, basically rocking the hard place between elected officials and trying to support those who are being appointed. The bottom line is we're the elected officials. We're the ones that have to make those tough decisions. And P and Z is an advisory board. I've learned, and I can guarantee you, there's no one in the audience who have been on more boards than me. I guarantee you. I've been on a lot of boards. But one of the things I always try to bring to the board is whatever decision is that a council or a commission makes, even if you're in the minority, that is the decision of the total board. You cannot go outside of a meeting and talk negative because you're in the...
Minority.
Minority, thank you. I should know that. But it is, it is just my care. I want everybody to be as happy as me and my wife. I really, that is my standard for how I want people to be. I don't want to do or say anything to harm or hurt anybody any day. When I leave this council meeting, I need to be able to sleep at night. So I must tell you, I was concerned about some of the things that I was hearing. I am not political at all, but I will tell you, when it comes down to me making a decision about how to help the mass of people, I'm going to be bold enough to make the decision. And I don't care if you get, I do care if you get angry with me. I don't want you to get angry with me. But if you do, I know in my heart, I'm trying to do the right thing for the people that I serve. So with that being said, I ask that all three of the, the members plus Woody, when you go before, and you're sitting on the dais, please remember that it is an advisory. When you are sitting there and you're saying that the council is not going to listen to us, or the council don't care, or the council is just ignoring what we're saying, know that we got a lot on our plate also. And sometimes we may agree with you, and sometimes we may not agree with you. But really, the buck stops here. We're the elected officials. We're the ones that have to make the decision. And it's never about, I don't know anybody on this dais who's making the decision based on what someone said on P and Z that we don't like. Because there's nobody on the council, on the P and Z that I know that I don't like. I mean, I like your attitude sometimes, but the bottom line to me is we got to take care of staff, we've got to take care of management, we got to take care of the citizens of Titusville. And I just want us all to, to get along, do the right thing, be positive about what you're doing because it is a blessing for you all to serve on these boards. It's a blessing for us to be on this dais. It's a blessing for us to serve the citizens. So never take things personally. Just know that what we all are doing is serving the mass of people, and that is something that we should all feel good about. So with that...
All right, well, I got another light, and I'm going to add to that briefly. Every one of the people who are on the board now that are up, I have discussed with the fact that I need them to always remember, and I think they do, they always need to remember, they're an advisory board. And sometimes when you're on a board and you're sitting up here and you're debating, and it's going long, you sometimes can forget that and feel like, well, this is what needs to happen, this is what has to happen. Well, no, this is what you're going to advise us to happen. And if we can get that, you know, set, we will, and I think we do. So I appreciate your concerns, and I appreciate the fact that I have talked to you individually, and I'll continue to do that. Vice Mayor.
And I just want to say, you're an advisory board, but when you go, guys go through stuff, and you point out, look at this, look at this, look at this, that's when I go back and I, I start questioning, why does Joyous not like this? What is she saying to me? And sometimes I call. So to me, the greatest benefit for us, having you, is that you go through at the difficult, convoluted problems. And you say, these are the things that might cause a problem, A, B, C, D. So that when we go through it, that's in the back of our head as we're reading the agenda. What is this? What is this? Why do I need to look at it more carefully? Why do I need to ask questions? So in that respect, I think you guys are very valuable.
Member Robinson.
Yes, I'm amazed that we all agree. But I wanted, I have the candidates. As I spoke with some of them, I told them that my major concern was experience. And that's what I would like to see. And being the new guy on the block, I've heard some of those conversations, and it was quite confusing to me. And I don't like to be confused. But I think the experience lies in the, the number that, that we are all agree on seemingly. And let that experience and, and make Titusville a better place, always keeping in mind the concern that was mentioned by the, the other members. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Member Jordan, would you... Member Jordan, would you please repeat the motion, please? You don't even need a name.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve the regular terms of Ms. George Parish, Mr. Joseph Richardson, and Mr. Dwight Severs for a two-year term to expire on 2023, and also appoint Mr. Woody Rice as the alternate. When does this term expire? When's this term expire, alternate?
It's gonna be the same.
Is it?
It expires November 30th, 2021.
2021, yes.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Thank you so much. Can we still have your second?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Could I have a roll call vote?
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very, very much. I appreciate your service, and I appreciate you applying. Thank you very much. Petitions and requests from public. Thank you, again. That was good. All right.
Are you ready? Ready, okay. All right. Okay, let's go.
Let's do it.
Okay, this is Stan Johnson here. I'm, I'm a registered professional engineer, and in this capacity right now, I'm speaking about something which I'm also watchdog for Fight for Zero, an environmental group. And you may be seeing this sign here, it says sewage spray. Sewage spray courtesy of City Council at Sandpoint Park. Free cities, free sewage spray that you can get. In fact, we had a spraying here just, just, just the other day during a space launch for, for all visitors. Anybody comes here, you can get free sewage sprayed on you. So I, I prepared a, a draft affidavit to you, and I'll send it to you, and I got no comments. So I went ahead and, and did the final affidavit, which is titled this way. I'm reading from this affidavit, it's a recorded affidavit, and it does not include Joe Richardson and Wanda, excuse me, Joe Robinson, Pastor Robinson. Okay. It says affidavit of a complete lack of common sense and disregard for human, for public health by the below-named Titusville employees and honorable elected city officials for their foolish decision to leave contaminated fountains turned on, that's to spray, spray everybody with, with sewage, in Sandpoint Park ponds contaminated by sewage field. And now this, this was happening for a month, for over a month. Unbelievable, here in Titusville. So here, here it is, it says, it identifies me and in Watchdog Group, so forth, is Fight for Zero, and repeatedly requests the city of Titusville, turn them off. Fact is, a police officer said, said to me, he said, these guys are nuts, city council and so forth, absolute nuts. So if you think I'm alone, I'm not alone in, in this, so as, so and at a special council meeting, one of our members from Watchdog Group said that they've got burning eyes, burning ears, vomiting, diarrhea, all kinds of consequences, and people for several days were disabled, complained to me, disabled because of the, the consequences of being exposed to the aerosol and so forth. So here's what I wrote. I said, our respected leaders, they, this, it's, it's over right now because I understand the, the fountain is, is not contaminated anymore. Our respected leaders, our city continue to choose not to, to shut off these dirty fountains. I got 20 seconds. Okay, it says, their complete lack of common sense and disregard for public health and safety is extremely shocking, unbelievable, and endangers the health, safety, and welfare of the public in a public park for more than a month where people gathered yesterday to watch a space launch. This is dated 22nd of January. So may I have, I'm asking for one more minute.
Counsel? I have no motion.
One more minute? Okay.
No, sir, thank you. Next speaker, please. Anybody else for consent? Name and address for the record.
Elizabeth Lovett, 1820 Hibiscus Drive, Edgewater, Florida. Hello, Mayor, City Council. I was here last time, and I spoke to you about my concerns with the Indian River Lagoon. We were actually called to this area by residents who were concerned that they weren't having their questions answered or their concerns addressed, and my initial concern when I came here was, of course, the health of the lagoon. That's my primary concern. But in the meantime, I got to know your residents, and they're an amazing group of diverse people that really want the best for your city, and it's a beautiful city, and I think it's great that they want to partner with the city. There's been a little breakdown in communication, unfortunately. I've experienced it, and I'm very experienced with getting answers, and I had to go to Tallahassee DOH, Department of Health, Department of Environmental Protection, Fish and Wildlife, in order just to find out what the communication was between the agencies. So I think what, what the breakdown is and has been is communication, and so our effort is to provide that information. I don't know whether we can work with the city on addressing some of these concerns and the flow of information, but we do want to go forward and educate the residents, and we have done our very first efforts in testing. We will do more testing. We had hoped we wouldn't have to use the funds that are being donated on testing. We had hoped the Department of Environmental Protection and the city would go forward with testing, specifically those ponds at Sandpoint, East Pond, and Spaceview Park are contaminated, contaminated with harmful algal blooms. I have a lot of experience with them. I suffered toxic exposure to four different cyanotoxins from a cyanobacteria bloom, and I have scars in my lungs, so I can speak from firsthand experience, and I was diagnosed with toxic exposure to cyanobacteria. So that's my perception as a, as a patient. My perception as a responsible government body is that that information would be disseminated to the residents in a warning. I've talked to the Department of Health and the Department of Environmental Protection for what those warnings were, would look like, and we are actually working on the language for door hangers. We don't think this problem's gonna go away anytime soon. These problems rarely do. But we would like to offer our assistance in helping to bridge that educational gap. I think that's somewhere where we might be able to help. Our goal is simply that, to bridge the gap of communication and make sure that true science is being delivered to the residents. We can help with that. We'd love to partner with you to do that, and we're here if you have any questions or would like to discuss what that might look like. Stell's here, I don't know if she's going to speak, but we'll be here for a few more minutes if you guys want to ask us any questions.
Counsel? Member Robinson?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Member Jordan?
I'm confused.
Okay.
When you're talking about the door hangers, what information are you gonna have on that? What's, what's that?
Well, I think, I, that's a good question. Right now, we're looking at patterning it off of the sewage spill hangers and the boil water hangers, because there actually isn't one for a cyanobacteria bloom. It is concerning that the fountains are still going, because that is aerating the cyanobacteria. Cyanotoxins are airborne. The science is very clear that it travels at least one mile, and there are signs that proves that it goes at least 60 miles. That's kind of where they stopped doing the studies, they just agreed that they conceded it went everywhere at varying points of, at varying levels, right? The source point being those ponds.
Okay, let me stop you right there, because I'm, I'm still confused, because you want to alarm the citizens about a potential problem?
No, I want to educate them, and this isn't something happening overnight. We're working on this going forward following test results. We won't be doing anything prior to having test results. It is meant to educate and prevent a public health crisis.
Are you, you keep asking?
I'm still confused. You want to put door hangers on our citizens' doors to educate them on what?
The risk of cyanobacteria exposure.
Specifically?
Toxins related to cyanobacteria specifically.
Okay. Done? I'm done.
Vice Mayor.
I was a little confused about the door hangers, but hindsight, what I'm, I'm looking back at, and I'm thinking, it would have been good to have somebody in a social media kind of role, maybe even part-time, that could inform the citizens of what are going on, what's going on, because when you're in the middle of a crisis, you're not thinking about talking to the people and saying, this is what's going on, this is the information. You're thinking about, how do I shut this down? How do I stop it? We talked about having a social media person a couple of years ago. I think Sarah brought it up.
That would be, that would be good.
You know, maybe that's something that this year, we should see if we could at least find a part-time.
We, we have that person on staff.
Okay. That can start answering those kind of questions. But if you have, you know, something specific that you're hoping that we can put out, then I think you could run it.
Actually, I do have something specific. I've experienced this before in municipalities, so I think the best thing to do would probably be to schedule a workshop with the various agencies that I discussed, and have a representative from those agencies come just for, just for your workshop to bridge the gap with you, to educate you with what their roles are. Roles have changed this year, we all know, with the permitting changes that have happened with the EPA and DEP. So I think we're starting to see this kind of, well, how do we handle this? So this is gonna be a learning experience for everyone, and hopefully we'll be able to navigate it in such a way that it will be successful. That's what we all want. But we're already seeing that the agencies aren't communicating, and I don't believe that DEP is quite ready for this transition. So we're gonna see some growing pains, I think at the very least.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
I appreciate your input, and obviously, and we had a brief discussion, it's certainly not your first rodeo. So yeah, let's see where we go from here, and, and I do at least want to add, I, I know our website, our homepage, had information on a daily basis.
Yes, a daily basis, once we figured out what was going on.
Yeah, and I don't, not sure, and we had this whole meeting two weeks ago. It, it took a while with the concrete to figure out exactly what happened, and once we thought it was a water main break, and then it was a sewer, and so, yes. And was there anything on our Facebook page? Is that what you just said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, Member, Member Stokel.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, so are you saying that you have already tested and detected this bacteria in the water?
We have tested, we have not gotten the results back. We expected them back today, but they didn't come before the meeting. They close at seven. We most likely will have them tomorrow. It's usually a 24-hour turnaround.
Okay, and you're saying if it is in there, that that doesn't die when it hits the air?
The toxins do not die when they hit the air. There's no proof that they ever die.
Okay, and then if someone were to get sick from this, and they went to their doctor, is it detectable that that's what they were sick from?
No, there is no test, although there is a test. I shouldn't say that. Harbor Branch actually created a test, a micro system test, there's a blood test, a nasal swab, but it's not clinically available yet. It's still part of a study that, the results of which are somewhat, it's, it's coming out in parts. Eventually, that, that will be available, I believe.
So if somebody were to experience sickness or illness, is there any way to correlate it to?
Yeah, it's quite frustrating. I can only speak to my personal experience. For me, it was quite a journey. We had to rule everything out, including cancer, and I don't know if anybody's been on that journey, when you've got tumors in your lungs, but it's a very scary journey to go on. It took me two years to get the results, and once everything has been ruled out, and they know that you have had that exposure, that, and they follow that timeline, then they can say that you have a diagnosis of toxic exposure to cyanobacteria.
Okay, and then with this particular bacteria, is this the one you guys are primarily focused on, or are there other bacterias that you're concerned about?
Cyanobacteria, there are many types of cyanobacteria, and they produce, many of them are harmless. They date back to the beginning of time, we couldn't live without them. So there's good cyanobacteria. Most cyanobacteria is good. The problem is, when they're fed nutrients and a super bloom occurs, they can produce toxins, and the toxins are the dangerous thing that we're worried about.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up.
Hi, I'm Stell Bailey, I'm the executive, executive director of Fight for Zero, I'm from Cocoa, Florida. I just kind of want to piggyback off of what she said. Our organization is already in Titusville doing numerous studies. We're working with the University of Florida, we're working on perfluorinated compounds. I'm not sure if you've heard of that particular contaminant, but we did a project last year off of a grant where we tested fountains across the county, and we detected perfluorinated compounds in the drinking water found at Sandpoint Park. So those chemicals are known as a forever chemical because they don't break down, they bioaccumulate. So we're doing a long study on that here, we're taking samples from the Indian River Lagoon. We have a second study on biosalids that we're going to be doing, so getting involved with this whole sewage spill, as you can understand, that's why we're really interested in it, because there's these particular contaminants that are in them that are extremely harmful. And if you haven't watched it, write this down, pay the $5 on YouTube to watch it, Dark Waters. It's a movie about these contaminants, it's based on a true story, it's about attorney Rob Billy. I was able to meet him in Washington DC. I've done a lot of work in Washington DC regarding these particular contaminants. I'm a co-facilitator of a national PFAS contamination coalition. We're already in discussion with the new president's administration on these chemicals and trying to get better regulation to safeguard communities just like Titusville's. We know that there's a vulnerable population, and that's why our work and what we're doing here in this county is so important, because these, these chemicals, you can look up the C8 study, there's many studies on these chemicals where they cause cancer, and they affect the liver, and autoimmune disease, and so our organization has been collecting cancer cases and autoimmune diseases since 2014, and it's just really alarming. We were the ones that were able to bring forward the satellite beach cases, and so this, this work's really important to me because my entire family got cancer in the same year. And we found out that our drinking water and our water in this area had these, these contaminants. So when she talks about cyanobacteria and she talks about these contaminants, it's really important that we educate people what to look out for. We're not trying to alarm them, per se. What we're trying to do is if you see bright green gookey stuff in the Indian River Lagoon, they need to know not to let their pets drink that water. It could be really potentially dangerous, and their pet could die, you know what I mean? So if we can educate people, knowledge is power, and then they could all work together. It'll make people care more, too, about the Indian River Lagoon if they know more. So I just wanted to bring over, I, I did pass out papers on perfluorinated compounds, and I, I'm working hard to try to get that out of the drinking water and find some solutions for our county in general, that Cocoa didn't detect it, but Titusville, unfortunately, we detected it, so, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Jordan, do you have a question? I'm sorry.
It wasn't time for you to sit down.
So I didn't call his name quick enough, I was thinking you, and now I see his name. So, yes.
You can't rush, for sure. I, I'm trying to understand, I'm really trying to understand what you all are trying to do. Are you looking at drinking water? Are you looking at pond water? Are you looking in the river? What are you looking at?
We look at all of the water. So we're looking at the Indian River Lagoon, some of us, so we have different tiers of our organization. We have our leadership team, our grassroots team, we have our watchdogs that document things for us. And so, for instance, she's really, really familiar with cyanobacteria, so she works with the Indian River Lagoon. I work with, PFAS is found in the Indian River Lagoon and the drinking water, so it's all different aspects of the water. It's not just one particular water source. I always say water is connected. You know, your groundwater goes into the ground, and it eventually becomes your drinking water at some point, so yeah, it's all the water.
So the chemicals that are harmful in the drinking water, it would not be taken care of by our system that we have?
No, it's not being, it's, in, in some cases, sometimes it's not even, it's not the drinking water facility, sometimes it's getting picked up somehow on the way to people's homes or to those water fountains. So we've got to figure out that problem. Our poor infrastructure definitely plays a part in what's going on with these chemicals.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let me ask you one question, because you're talking infrastructure, and we know infrastructure's old all over the country, so this is a problem everywhere.
Yeah, and so I'm at, it's really crazy, because people look at us like, oh, you guys are these advocates, and I actually advocate for better technology for utilities, right? I advocate for more funding for utilities, because that's really what we need in these cities in order to fix this problem, and so I'm hoping, I'm really hopeful that we'll be able to get... I advocate for more funding for utilities, because that's really what we need in these cities in order to fix this problem. And so I'm hoping, I'm really hopeful that we'll be able to get that and be able to advocate for that more.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you tell me, since you've been doing this since two, uh, 2014, tell me one city that got good water?
The city of Cocoa actually came back and did not detect these chemicals in their water.
This time?
This time, yeah. They did in, in, um, in the beginning, they still have it in their groundwater, but their drinking water is what we were really concerned about, because when you ingest it, um, these, these chemicals are really dangerous.
So how, how do we move forward? We must have water.
Yes.
Uh, to drink. Um, again, I, you know, work with distillers and evaporators to make saltwater and the freshwater and, and all of that. So tell me, what do we do as we move forward to, uh, handle this problem? Because we have to drink water. So what are we going to tell the people? What would you tell your child? If he had a drink of water right now, what city would he go to to get it?
He would, he, my children would not go to any city.
So you drink bottled water?
No, what I do is I filter my own water with either a GAK and a reverse osmosis system. And I always say invest, because I'd rather have that added protection, because our infrastructure's bad, so.
So that's, I mean, that's answered my question, so, uh, we need some more.
That's good, it means everybody's water's getting filtered, not getting sour.
Yep.
Thank you, again. Uh, next speaker. Next speaker. Alright, guys, I appreciate you guys. I, I really feel like, uh, some good thoughts came out of this. Um, City Manager, we move to the.
Uh, we are to, uh, on consent. We have one item, uh, would any of the council members want to pull this item?
I've only got one choice.
Um, Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, we have Stan Johnston.
And, uh, Mayor and Council, for the record, I'd like to read the one consent.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, Consent agenda item 8A, approved resolution 5-2021 approving the temporary closure of A Max Brewer Bridge on February 27th, 2021, for the Max Brewer 5K Run Walk and US1 for the St. Patty's Day Downtown Street Party on March 12th, 2021.
Counsel?
I've moved that we approve resolution.
I believe you have one card.
Am I, right now, my counsel, you have any questions with that first, and then I'm going to go with the card?
I don't want the card.
No, no? Uh, Vice Mayor?
One second.
No, no, no motion, no second. Sometimes when they read it, you have something, okay, Stan.
Uh, Stan Johnston, 860.7 Avenue. And I'm, I'm here as a, as a citizen and as a professional engineer. And what I have sent to you is that, I want to say is that I oppose, the city of Titusville voting on this issue, and I'm going to give you reasons why. But I am neutral as far as, uh, this, uh, passage of it. So here's what I've done. I've, I've, I've given you, I've given you three things. I've given you, um, an email of over 30 pages. I've given you a, uh, copy of this about Mr. Stauffer, and I've given you an affidavit of, uh, lack of common sense and disregard for public health. So, uh, in those three things, um, the, uh, this matter has to do with the title of my email that I sent you that's over 30 pages long. And here's the title, I'll read you the title. The title says, "These written comments," I want you to listen to this, "These written comments pertain to all agenda items because these written comments pertain to, to my request for the termination, resignation of Sean Stauffer," who I told you about this, this little drawing I have, "City Manager and City Attorney, and City Attorney, and the resignation of all council members except for Pastor Robinson, for their participation and support of dishonesty, fraud, slander, defamation, provocation of me, insults, closed-door policy, blacklisting, arbitrary and complicit decisions," I'm talking about you guys, "nonsense, malfeasance of office, incompetence, failure to obtain a competent professional engineer to dispute my inconvenient findings." This has been going on for years. You still don't get a PE to dispute what I'm present to you. Failure to respond to questions, concerns at the January 12th, uh, 2021 special council meeting. City's failure of city's continued lies about city's failure to contain sewage, and city's secret illegal discharge of sewage into the river. Failure to return phone calls, I mean, and respond to emails. I've been calling the, the, you have a sign up at, at Sandpoint Park that has a phone number to call. I've been calling it for a month. No return calls, no return calls at all. I, I send them emails, they don't return. I'm talking about water resources. So you got a phone number, it's not responding.
I'm reading this consent agenda, I, I was looking for a while, I know you're doing all kinds of different.
Yes, sir.
Can you come back to why you don't want us to be able to close the road?
Oh, I explained, I explained to you, Dan, is that, is that I don't, uh, uh, I don't want you to do it because I, I'm saying that, that the group of officials here is that they're, they're, they're so, I'm, I'm listing a, a, a number of.
Now you're going to phone calls and emails.
Exactly.
Really, I really would like to hear outside of how you feel about us, even though I thought I was with Joe's team.
Well.
But go ahead, and we're getting close.
Yeah, you missed, I guess you're missing my point.
No, I, I see your point. You're, you're, you're saying that you don't want any, to do anything because you can't trust us, basically.
That's, that's pretty much, yeah.
See, I got it, we could be done.
Pardon?
I said, we got it, we could be done. I'm going to start the clock back up, you ready?
Okay, yes, sir.
Start the clock.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diesel, you're a gentleman. And, uh, I know that you've been a wonderful father and a husband, too.
Come on now, let's go.
Excuse me, no, you are, let's face it, and a good coach, too.
Thank you.
I've heard that from even, from, even Brad Russell said that.
Now look what you did. I got your point, though, didn't I?
Okay, my time's up, okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Okay, so that was the consent agenda.
Yeah, we'll need to vote on it.
Right, I'm just making sure.
Yes, sir.
And there's no more.
That's it.
Alright, I'm looking here, I see Member Jordan.
Can I speak now?
You may.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move that we approve resolution number 5-2021 approving temporary closure of state roads for special events.
I have a motion, and I'm looking at Vice Mayor.
Second.
And we have a second. So we have a motion and a second, roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
And on to, uh, agenda.
Wait, this is where I get the same motion passed unanimously.
Yes, sir.
Now we go to 9A.
On to ordinance's second reading, public hearing and related action. We're on agenda item 9A. This is the first reading of ordinance 30, or correction, 3-2021 relating to brew pubs.
This is ordinance number 3, 2021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending chapter 28 zoning of the land development regulations, specifically designating brew pubs as permitted uses in tourist, community commercial, regional commercial, downtown mixed-use, urban mixed-use, shoreline mixed-use, regional mixed-use 300 and 400 sub-districts, urban village and Indian River City neighborhood commercial zoning districts, by amending section 28-54 use table to add brew pub, creating section 28-105.8 brew pub and providing for definitions, amending section 28-204 craft brewery, craft distillery, by designating craft brewery, craft distillery as a permitted use in planned industrial development zoning district, deleting section 28-213 micro brewery, and amending sections 28-342 accessory use table and 28-361 outdoor areas of seating, to allow outdoor areas of seating as a limited use in regional mixed-use 300 sub-district, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances for an effective date and incorporation into the code.
Uh, this is the first reading and first public hearing. The second and final public hearing will be held at the regular city council meeting on February 9th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. And you have planning and zoning's recommendations as part of your packet. Ms. Busaka's available to answer questions that, uh, council may have.
Ms. Busaka, anything to add?
Only that, uh, I would expect to see the recommendation from planning and zoning to change some of what's in this ordinance tonight, because they have a number of concerns and have asked for additional information.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counsel, any questions for staff? Uh, Member Stokel.
Thank you.
Yes.
Peggy, do we have, if we were to pass this, do we have a map of all the areas that this micro brewery could then come up?
I would be delighted to ask GIS to put that together.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking is, my concern would be, I feel like TMZ is asking for all these conditions, not necessarily because they're worried about it in one location, but they might potentially be worried about it in other locations, so I feel like that would be helpful. Thank you.
You good?
Yes.
Alright, uh, Member Robinson.
Yes, in alignment with Members Stokel. Uh, I'm concerned of where they want to locate someone at this place, uh, these things, and, uh, and, you know, if they, um, we don't want to change the zoning to put it in a place that we already got troubles. And, um, that, that's my concern. So as we move forward, uh, this, uh, the landing spots that this, uh, activity is going on, it need, it's very important before that, uh, we can, uh, vote on it. So that they're okay, I, I want the, uh, the zoning change for this location at this point, and we see how it's going to affect the community versus anything else.
Okay. Thank you. Any cards?
Yes, sir, we have Stan Johnston.
Stan?
Uh, 860.7 Avenue, it's the same guy came up here just before. And, uh, I'm, uh, opposed to this for the same reason I was opposed for the other one, and I'm, uh, neutral, or let's say neither, for, uh, how you deal with it. But I was, I, I didn't even get finished reading the, 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 the title of my email that I sent to you that's over 30 pages longer. So, so I'm going to try to suffer through this, this title, which is somewhat lengthy, and it, uh, what, it, it says it, it's, "The written comments pertain to my request for the termination, resignation of Sean Stauffer and City Manager and City Attorney, the resignation of all council members except for Pastor Joe, for their participation and support of dishonesty, fraud, slander, defamation, provocation, insults, closed-door policy, blacks, blah, 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 failure, tainted, blah, 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 blah." And, uh, uh, the, the, generate 12th meeting, um, and cities, well, I mean, I'm trying to get down to, "Failure to return phone calls," I did that, "Failure refusal to view the," here's one. "Failure, failure, and refusal to view the illegal discharge of sewage to the river." In other words, I invite all of you, all of you to come and I'll show you the, uh, sewage going to the river. Nobody came, even City Attorney didn't come. Nobody wants to see, certainly, nobody wants to see the sewage, they want to see the legal sewage. So, so that's, that's in the title, saying, nobody wants to see the city breaking the law, because that could be millions of dollars. Nobody wants to see it. Is that a surprise? I don't know. And, uh, and, uh, here's another one, is, uh, "Failure refusal to view," okay, uh, to view, "Oh, failed failure to shut off fountains that sprayed sewage onto the public." My golly, that's another reason there. So that's why I think you're, you're really, you're not competent to, to make these decisions. I can't trust you. And so it's a disregard for human life. I say disregard for human life because that lady, one of these ladies that came up here tonight, I'm not going to say which one, she suffered for days from the exposure at Sandpoint Park. Days, her immunity system's compromised. She could have died. And you, you, and you, not Mr. Robinson, and you, and you, and you, would be responsible. I'm serious. This is a serious matter. I mean, even Ms. Stokel, who's, who's not paying any attention at all, she could be responsible for it. Mrs. Nelson, who thinks she's, thinks so highly of being, and, um, and, uh, someone who is the, uh, chairman of the hospital board. Hey, go ahead and let it spray them, go ahead and spray them. It doesn't, it didn't hurt me. May I have another minute?
I see none.
Okay, thank you.
But I do want to add, Stan's there right there.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm going to really hope that you're going to go forward and talk about, glad I didn't hear anything about the, what the locations, and, and, you know, I do pay attention to what you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
So just so you know, I feel, I'm, look at me, I'm paying attention.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
No, so the point I'm making is, I need you to come up and, we get it, you don't trust us. Now I want to hear what you have to say about the other things when they're up there. If you don't like tiny homes, or if you don't like brew pubs or something, I want to hear about that.
Okay, okay.
The second thing is, um, to take the lead from Mr. Robinson, um, to correct you, I don't know about the rest of the council members, we don't get to talk too much, but I will tell you that I was out to that site at least eight times, o, over the two-week period. And, uh, I'm not going to tell you what's good. I want to, I mean.
Yeah.
It was what it was.
But you didn't come and see the sewage.
Say again, now?
You didn't go, come see the sewage going in the river with me.
Well, I didn't go with you, I just, I can, I can drive myself out there, and I walked around.
Well, you got to find it.
And the contractor showed me. I just want to let you know I was there.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Alright, I get going, kind of like the old days, a little bit, uh, where are we at here? Alright, no, uh, action is necessary on that, uh, first reading, so City Manager.
That's correct, sir, we're on, uh, agenda item 9B now. This is the ordinance relating to tiny houses, ordinance 4-2021, and this will be the first reading.
This is ordinance 4, 2021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to amend chapter 28 zoning of the land development regulations to allow tiny houses in multi-family medium-density residential R2, multi-family high-density residential R3, urban mixed-use UMU residential manufactured housing RMH1, and residential manufactured housing park RMH2 zoning districts, by amending section 28-54 use table, by adding section 28-80.5 tiny houses, by adding section 280.6 tiny house on wheels, T H O W, by amending section 28-178 travel trailer park, and by amending chapter 33 development options, by amending article 1, planned development PD, by amending section 33-6 internal yard and bulk requirements, and by amending chapter 37 definitions, by amending section 37-1 definitions to add definitions of cottage home development, tiny house, and tiny house on wheels, T H O W, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading and first public hearing. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on February 9th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. And you have planning and zoning's, um, recommendation following this. And Ms. Busaka's available to answer questions that council may have regarding this first reading.
Staff, anything more? Brad?
Well, sir, this is a two-year project, and we got the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve it, so we'll try and answer any questions you have about this.
Uh, I have plenty up here, they're bouncing around, though, people are coming and going. Uh, Member Stokel?
Hi, thank you. Um, Brad, would you mind just reminding me what R2 zoning with the medium consists of?
The R2 zoning district is a, uh, multi-family zoning district. It allows townhomes and apartment complexes and other multi-family structures. And it has a maximum residential density of nine units per acre. That's the difference between that and the R3.
Okay, that's, that's good, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
This was just a question that came up. I went to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee meeting, and they were talking about tiny homes and using Habitat to come in and do tiny homes. What they were suggesting was 650 feet being the minimum, or maximum, amount of square feet. And I don't know if it makes that big of a difference. They seem to think that it did.[1717.24] So, I was kidnapped, their thought was, when you have people who are retired, it gives them the ability to have a little bit of extra, extra space, and it makes it a little bit nicer for them. So I was just going to suggest that.
We can increase it. Our, the reason why we put that range in there for permanent on foundation tiny homes, between 350 and 600 square feet, was partly based on the requests of the developers that were coming in to try and build tiny homes, where we didn't have anything in the code to allow it. And then the maximum, we, we proposed that to kind of firmly distinguish between a tiny home and the minimum residential living space requirement that we have for our other standard single-family homes, which is 900 square feet. We could certainly increase it.
I would like to see it increased, 50 square feet, I mean, you know, and if they want to build smaller houses, yeah.
You said, the recommendation you heard was a minimum of 650?
Oh, no, maximum, sorry. Maximum of 650.
I was going to have some say.
Sorry.
Member Robinson?
Yes, I, I was in attendance to one of the workshops, the meeting back in August or September, when they were here speaking of the tiny homes. One, I have a, when you say R2, and I see that all over the place that I read and, and rating, I'm concerned where you are thinking about putting these tiny homes. And it is not clear when we say tiny homes, are we talking about family homes, or are we talking about single resident homes? When you just say tiny homes, I know that they're the standard for occupancy as far as how much space and so forth, but if you put them in the wrong location, and you put them in, in places, I've seen enough in dealing with housing over the years, that you may want one person in there, you may want two people in there, but once the management stops and once you stop overseeing it, it's going to, the cats are going to come out. So the concern is where you're planning on putting the first couple, and I saw where you're, you're going to group them, only so many can be in one place, and so forth. But still, if we choose to go this route, and we identify how many individuals can stay in these tiny homes that, that are coming in, that may be coming in, and where are we going to locate the first batch, and see how that comes out with management, and are they going to have a home, a HMO, to keep them, you know, to keep them squared away, or we are just going to put them, and all of a sudden, that we hope that they will manage and keep themselves? Those are my, my concerns with that.
I heard three concerns, it looks like, about maintenance. The approval that we're, process that we're proposing for these on permanent foundation in those proposed zoning districts would be through a master plan. And that's not a PD rezoning, it's not a conditional use permit, that's a master plan, and according to our code right now, that requires a public hearing. So through that process, through the public hearing process, could be, those kind of issues could be addressed. That was a concern of the commission as well, about maintenance. The other question about number of people living in each of these units, these will have to be, have to be built and permitted according to the Florida Building Code. So that'll, that'll address that issue as far as occupancy.
Right, and then that will change the status, whether it's a tiny home or a regular home.
Correct.
That is correct?
The third is grouping. So on permanent foundation, we're recommending the cottage home type development style, which is
Right, I agree with you.
Five of them around a common area, so that can be considered, it could be used as an infill type of development. If it is in a residential manufactured home setting, and could be on wheels, there's different standards we place in there. So they're going to be treated as if they're a mobile home community differently. So, but we only have a few zoning districts, they actually, in the city, they have that particular zoning district. And then there also, there's also the option of allowing them on wheels on a temporary basis, similar to an RV park, like a travel trailer park. So that can be, but those, those two options would have to be approved through the conditional use permit process.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other council member comment? Call the card.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, eight sixty points that avenue, and I'm here, and I oppose this group voting on it, except for Pastor Robinson. And in this particular case, I will not continue reading this subject line, because just during this meeting, I was reading to you something, and Mr. Parrish, right here, Mr. Brad Parrish, he walked out the door. And I was reading about him. Huh. So I'm going to read that section that is, that is in this email that has to do with Mr. Parrish. So it says here, this is about Mr. Parrish not being honest. It says, "The resilient Tidesville report, under the part authorship of Eddie Galindo and Brad Parrish, is deliberately false." I'm talking about this Brad Parrish right here. They, they, and I say Brad, deliberately omitted information that I sit to him and discussed thoroughly with him in the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council and presented to him at workshop. Big time, big time, dishonesty. And I'm saying, he's not dishonesty just to me, dishonesty to council, dishonesty to F, FDEP, is it? I think it's FDEP, and also to the state of Florida. Because this resilient report is, is, is an important report, resilient Tidesville report, is an important thing, and it's false. I mean, I spent hours, hours on, on this, and I submitted to my information emails and all kinds of affidavits, and all kinds of things, and drawings, and none of it, absolutely none of it got into that report, none of it. I was promised it was going to be in there. So he lied, and lied, and lied, and lied, and lied.
Stop clock.
Okay.
All right. You had your, you had your run there, but do you know what 9B is? You stood up for 9B.
Absolutely know what it is. It has to do with tiny homes.
And I'd like to hear what you think about tiny homes and the ordinances that they're may pass.
Okay, in this, the tiny homes thing, okay, the tiny homes thing, you know, has, is that I'm neither on this. So you go ahead and vote on this, but I don't, I'm a joke to you voting on it, but I haven't researched that much, but as far as Brad Parrish, what I did is I went to Human Resources, I went to Human Resources.
Stop clock, Stan. We're going to work together on this. 9B is 9B. 9B is tiny homes. I want to hear what you think about tiny homes. That's what you signed up to talk about, right?
Yeah, I think you're missing the point.
No, I'm not missing the point. I get you don't trust Brad, you don't trust us, I get that. Now, you, you've talked about being an engineer, I'd like to hear what you think about tiny homes and what we should do with them.
If I get to it, but, but right now.
No, you've got to get to it.
I, I did, I just explained to you, I, my opinion on that is, is neither, but I'm also telling you right now is that, is that why I, I do not believe that any of you, including...
Start clock.
Okay, all right, okay, including the city attorney and the city manager, she's big on that, because, because I went to, I went to Human Resources, and I complained about Brad Parrish. And the thing is, is that I could see, after discussion, it was going to go the same way the complaint I had against Mr. Stauffer, which was many pages long. Is what happened is, the shyster here, city manager, what he did is he took that report and threw it in the wastebasket, I never got any comments from St. Stauffer, I expect the same thing's going to happen with Brad Parrish. He's going way out of his way to be dishonest. I'm talking about your shyster city manager. In other words, I make a complaint, and he throws it away.
Here's where we're at now, and, and I really love it when you say good things, but I can't keep going like that. The point is, we're talking 9B tiny homes, and you're talking shyster, don't trust, and all that. So what I'm going to ask you to do, is I'm going to ask you, and I don't want to do this part, but if you can't stay on 9B, that's what this is, you signed a card to talk about 9B.
Yeah.
And I don't know how it's been in the past, but what we're going to do is we're going to try to talk about 9B. You have the, the, what is it, when they say what they want? Help me out here. Petitions and requests, and I don't stop you on petitions or requests, you just do what you want there. But we are in 9B, and I would like us to get a rhythm here, me and you, that you're going to give me some information on that.
Okay, let me...
So if you're done with 9B, and you're not going to say anymore on tiny homes, I'd like you to just say I'm done.
Okay, you just asked me a question.
9B.
Now, I want to respond to what you said to me. All right, I want you to understand this, right now, Brad Parrish is presenting something to you, and he's a liar and a cheat.
Okay, you said, you said...
He lied big time. Okay, now wait a second. So, so I should be able to tell you what the heck Mr. Parrish did? And that's what I want to tell you, what he's done, and what city manager normally does, and I expect it'll just be erased from history, because you'll never get it because of the crookedness in this city government, includes Mr. Parrish.
All right. Are you going to talk anymore about 9B? Because you've already said all that.
I have, I, I haven't said anything, so I've got, what about?
Fifty seconds left?
I have no idea, I can't see it.
I've got nine seconds left.
Well, I'm glad we had this discussion, because I really hope we can get on the same page.
Okay.
All right, nine seconds, start the clock.
Thank you very much. I want you to understand is that you've got really serious problems with Mr. Brad Parrish, who's been lying and cheating to me, and you, and many other people. Thank you.
Thank you. No action required. City manager, 9C.
You want to read the rules?
Yep.
Mayor, at this time, I'll read the rules for quasi-judicial proceedings. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign an oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table in the back of the council chamber. Those speaking in favor requests will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, council, staff representatives, and such other representatives authorized by council. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk of all persons wishing to speak for the city council, sign an oath card. If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on a quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk of all agenda items been properly advertised.
Yes, sir.
Have any council members visited the site or spoken to any members of the public regarding quasi-judicial item to be reviewed?
No.
Thank you. This is Item C, rezoning number 2, 2020 Huntington Park, and ordinance number 2, 2021, an ordinance to the City of Tidesville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference, by replacing the present planned development PD zoning ordinance number 17, 2019, a master plan for a certain property approximately 79 plus or minus acres in size, having parcel ID number 223517AV26, located on the west side of Park Avenue, north of Country Club Drive, and providing for an effective date.
The applicant on behalf of the owner is requesting to amend the previously approved PD ordinance for approximately 79 acres of vacant land located west of Park Avenue and north of Country Club Drive. The request proposes to amend the existing PD master plan to reduce the number of residential units from 110 single-family homes to 86 single-family homes, and reduce the number of access points from two to one due to engineering design criteria requirements. Portions of the development are also, are also dedicated as recreational areas, open space, wetland conservation areas, flood compensatory storage areas, stormwater management, and infrastructure improvements. On January 6, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with the conditions that parking on the roads is restricted to single side using odd and even approach. That vote was four yes and three no. Member Murray and Chairman Severs clarified the concerns of the Planning and Zoning Commission to be conveyed to city council. Public safety of egress and ingress, number two, the desire to have landscape plan for retention areas based on Section 6.1.8 of the technical manual, number three, stormwater concerns regarding stormwater retention and the condition of existing stormwater and sewer infrastructure adjacent to the site to which the project will connect. And number four, potential addition of walking path connecting Huntington Park and Falcon Roost. Ms. Bisac is here to describe the project and answer questions that you may have before the applicant comes up.
Ms. Bisac, you have anything right now?
I'm going to have Mr. Parrish
Okay, Mr. Parrish.
Turn this on. Thank you, thank you very much, and I have a brief presentation.
Very good.
I want to, let me make sure this is, yes, okay. The summary is that this is an existing 79 plus or minus acre parcel zoned PD. Currently, 110 units are permitted on it, and the request this evening is to remove, to reduce that residential to 86 units. This is a brief description of the, the way the new approved master plan would look on the right versus on the left. The reason this is here in front of you tonight is because the, if this had simply been a reduction in the number of units, it would not have had to come back to you per the code. But because this was relocated somewhat closer to the north property line, the code requires that you consider it. The, one of the options, one of the changes you should notice is that on the approved current plan shown on your left, there is a roadway that goes out to a proposed development we're reviewing known as Falcon's Roost. On the proposed master plan, this additional road is not shown. It's located west of Park Avenue, north of Country Club Road. The minimum lot area is 5,000 square feet, and the minimum floor area is 1,400. There are several changes to the planned development to reduce the maximum dwelling units. The staff has, if you'll notice, the PD shows additional language requiring, required amenities with recreational tracks. The minimum lot width has been reduced for the pie-shaped lots in the cul-de-sac, and at the building line, that minimum lot width of 50 feet, it remains. The, there was some discussion at the last meeting about pavement width, the 26-feet-wide right-of-way includes 22 feet of pavement and the curb and gutter. So if there were any request for a reduction, that would go to the staff, but the code requires that it meet DOT standard green book. So that may have been a larger issue than it's going to turn out to be because of the confusion between the difference between the right-of-way and the width of the pavement. There is wildlife culvert beneath the roadway that was included in the first development approval. Utilities are placed underground consistent with the code. There is going to be a fence lock and screening surrounding the lift station, and in addition to that, there are specific requirements for budget, buffer width vegetation, and the open space and recreation requirements. I think that's the end of the presentation. This evening, we will also be looking at the sketch plat. This was, what I just described to you was the change to the PD zoning. The sketch plat has been reviewed by the staff. It is a category, it's Agenda Item 12A, and page 425 of your agenda shows that all of the requirements for the sketch plat have been met, and they are depicted on the information that you were provided. So staff recommends approval of both the PD change and the sketch plat.
And we'll have to take those items separately with separate votes, but why Peggy's introducing that is because it's, they're connected.
I get it. Anything else, staff? Okay, with that, questions from council, Member Stokel?
Thank you. Peggy, I just have two clarifying questions for the summary of the amendments. One, utilities placed underground, were they originally going to be above ground?
Excuse me?
The utilities placed underground, were they originally going to be...
No, that's required by the code.
So what, what's being amended there, then?
There's, it's just the, it's, we just commented that the utilities are underground.
Okay, and then could you just explain the pavement width, which you said includes the right-of-way?
I have my
Thank you.
Training wheels here.
The code requires a 50-foot-wide right-of-way width, but the issue was about the pavement, the road itself. And so the code says that there is a requirement for a local street, which is what this would be, of 26 feet, and according to our city engineer, that includes pavement plus the gutter. So I think there was some confusion as about whether that road should be 26 feet of pavement width itself, and I don't think there was any discussion about the gutter as, in addition to that, or included in that. So, but the applicant is proposing an even narrower pavement width. And if that's approved with this, there is a process in our code to allow it to go through some kind of administrative review process. But that has to be justified, and it has to meet what Peggy mentioned, the Florida Green Book standards, which is FDOT standards for road design.
So just to clarify, that wouldn't necessarily be needed for us to discuss regarding this?
No, it probably could be handled during the site plan review stage. If we do need to clarify it, we can probably state that that particular design element probably needs an administrative waiver as part of the PD ordinance or as part of the sketch plat approval.
Okay.
So that it's clear, but, unless...
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Oh, Brad, or Peggy, actually.
Oh, Brad, or Peggy, Ashley. Are we saying that the road to Falcon's Roost is still there?
No, if you would notice that there was no, there was not on the master plan, the road to Falcon's Roost.
So that's been deleted?
Yes, because of the redesign, and I believe when the applicant comes up to speak, he'll explain that the redesign was based on the environmental constraints on the property.
Okay, and then the other question I had, let me go back, was I know Planning and Zoning suggested parking, alternating cars?
Be gone, then.
Oh, I'm getting in trouble. Okay, that we alternate car here, car here, car here, car here. Would it be possible just to say cars are going to park on one side? Would that work? Or we go upside the whole neighborhood?
Well, I think what you're doing then is you're saying that people can't park in front of their home.
Right.
So the alternating days, the only place I've ever seen it done is in a city like Washington DC or New York City, where on Mondays you park on the even side and on Tuesdays you park on the odd side. Part of the reason that's important is because they have snowplows, and they want to make sure the snowplows have plenty of room. But I believe that that was the request of P&amp;Z, that they have alternating days rather than if you're on the left side, you get to park in front of your house, and if you're on the right side, you don't.
Okay, and this is something that I was thinking about over the weekend, the lift station. You know, we're talking about putting in generators for some lift stations in the city. And as I told Mr. Larisse, bad things only happen when you really don't want them to So what about putting in a lift station with a generator at the beginning so that we never have that issue?
This would be a wonderful time for Ashley Smith to come in and talk about that. She's not looking happy. I apologize.
That's certainly something that we can bring up as part of the site plan. We do evaluate each site plan to see if they meet our conditions for a generator. Typically, it's based on size of the lift station. If it's along the river, we've made that a condition. And then also, if it's something remote where there would be a benefit during a disaster, to have one there permanently instead of having to mobilize a mobile generator. But you can certainly recommend that we require it for this site plan, and then we would address that during the site plan process.
I would recommend it because, you know, hurricanes always seem to bring out problems, problems that you don't expect. And so to me, it makes more sense to go ahead at the beginning and say, hey, let's go ahead and do this. And we only have a certain number of generators, and I understand we're running around the city, and so this would at least be one that we didn't have to worry about.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think that's it.
Okay, council, any more questions of staff? Okay, applicant, come on down.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council and staff, Peggy, appreciate that presentation as always, right on point. My name is Bruce Moye, I'm president of MVB Engineering, representing the applicant for this project. As some of you may remember, we came to this board, I think it was about a year and a half process where we tried, we got the zoning that we currently have. We did a lot of concessions, there was a lot of debate, a lot of suggestions, and we incorporated as many as we possibly could. And that was when the bank owned the property, the bank got the entitlement, they sold the property. They sold it to Holiday Builders who purchased the property, only to find out that they came up about two acres short on the actual property they purchased because the survey was incorrect, and they bought it with one hundred and ten lots, and then to find out that we can't put one hundred and ten lots on the property. So not that anybody's going to feel bad for the developer, but he is already, you know, we came up with this design to make this project work. We preserved as much as we could, we're basically only developing a third of the site. We came to this revision, and we have to get this rezoning only because we provided more detailed information when we did our design. Once Holiday Builders purchased the property, they got surveys done, they got topo done, they did soil borings, we did the floodplain analysis, we did compensated storage, we looked at, we surveyed all the trees that were required to be twenty inches and above. So we really got all the information we needed to get, and then we came up with this plan. And we worked it around the trees, we worked around to save as much upland buffers as we possibly could, we tried to reduce the impact on the floodplain, that was really important, reduce the impact on the wetlands, and, you know, I guess really out of almost accident, we developed this LID subdivision. We reduced the pavement width so that we have smaller ponds and less impervious area. We clustered the lots and made them smaller so that we could, they're really the same size as what we had approved, but they're a little more clustered to preserve as many trees as possible. And these are only the trees that are twenty inches and above. We're going to do, and we're right now currently doing a survey of all the trees less than twenty inches, so there's going to be a lot more trees on this property that you can't even see here yet. So we'll be preserving a lot, a lot of trees on the property. We feel this is the best that we can provide on this property and still make it a viable project. We think it's going to make the city proud. I think this is going to be an excellent conservation style subdivision with low-impact development standards. We did not, because we reduced the lot count, we were no longer required by your life safety and fire safety department to provide the second access to the west, and that, from what I understand, that subdivision isn't even extending the road to our property line anyway. But we did agree to do a pedestrian connection, and that's, we still offer that. We are no further north on the east part of the site than we were originally, we're a little bit more north on the western part, but not much. We still have a very large couple hundred-foot buffer to the north property line, so we don't feel we're impacting anything to the north any more than we would, and we're far less impacting the subdivision to the south. So we think it's an improvement. We think we preserved as much as we possibly can. We hope that we didn't have to come here and get this amendment, but we are here, and I'm sure there's going to be some discussion, and we, I just would like to either answer your questions now, and then I'll come back up for any kind of rebuttal from what I hear.
Member Jordan.
I don't even know where to start with this. You guys had a, I thought, a pretty good plan at first, and you lost twenty-six houses, right? What's the cost of these houses going to be? Somewhere around three hundred thousand or so?
Yeah, I mean, it's market-driven, I mean, this is a nice area, I'm sure they're going to get top dollar, they're going to build nice homes. I don't know if you're familiar with Holiday, but they're going to look at this as a really nice product line, it's not going to be, you know, like your Express Series or anything like that. So I think the market study showed around three hundred thousand was about the price point for this. Maybe that's changed since the study was done, that was over a year ago, prices are going up, and so I'm sure they're going to try to get as much as they possibly can for these houses.
The, I was trying to find, you say there's going to be a pedestrian walkway? Where is that located?
It would be coming off the pedestrian, if you see that pathway that goes along the west property line?
Is that red?
Yes, yes, sir. So we will have just a little stub to the west to make sure that if there's a pedestrian crossing coming from the west, we'll pick it up.
I saw something about fence area, where is the fence area going?
We aren't proposing any fences, we want to keep the buffers as natural as possible. There was, the original proposal was to put a wall on the north property line, on the east part of the property, but there's a really nice twenty-foot vegetated buffer that we'd like to maintain rather than clear it to put a wall up. I think a nice dense, very tall vegetated buffer is much better than a six-foot wall where we'd have to clear a lot of the existing vegetation to install it.
So are you looking, if I'm looking at this right, you're basically going to be parallel with the entrance way to the other subdivision across Park Avenue, is that correct?
Yeah, we're doing a four-way, which is recommended by traffic engineering to always have, not to have an offset intersection and to have it up close.
Oh, so you're going to widen Park Avenue?
No, sir.
No? You're just going to come off a...
No, sir.
So where's the, you say it was four lanes? Is that what you just said?
No, sir, no, a four, a plus intersection, so we're lining up with the driveway with the entrance to the subdivision across the street.
So when you turn into the subdivision, what's the yellow thing? I can't really see what those...
Did you have the thirty-seven...
Yeah, because I can't see what this is at all. There's some writing in it.
Can you please put the presentation right up?
And while we're doing that, if IT can hear me, I need some help up here. I did one of those things when you get to BRA, I'll say hour, lost everything. So I've got nothing, I'm faking it up here. I got my paper.
Are they asleep back there or what?
Yeah, I don't know if they can hear you.
Nobody came back, and you're the mayor.
I don't even know what happened.
Oh, yeah. I'm trying to understand the, I see the lime green, right? You see the lime green? Is that, I guess you call that south? I can't point to it, so.
In the southwest corner?
Peggy, where's your little red thing?
Well, you know what?
It's not working? Technology. Well, there is a bridge, I see the bridge there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, I understand the bridge, but actually, is that, I guess that's southwest? You got the bright green, right, with the trees?
Yes, sir.
So what is the, what is the next one, you had an auto, what'd you call it? The light green next to the bright green, what is that? Oh, you can't see?
According to the map on page 722 of your agenda, that is called flood compensatory tract.
So is that wet? Is that wet? Wet land or what?
That's what the engineer will have.
No, but what we have to do is because the topography on the site is, it actually varies quite a bit for this area, so in order to build the lots, we have to fill in some of the floodplain, so where we're filling in, we're taking out.
Okay.
So we'll be scraping the dirt out of those areas.
So surrounding most of the property, is that water?
No, there will be no water standing on the property, except for in the wetlands, in the wet season, the ponds will be dry, the compensated storage is supposed to be dry.
Okay.
You know, so there won't, no, there's no standing water.
So there's grass in the pond area?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Mr. Moye, the map on that side?
On the right side is what we're proposing, yes.
The right?
Yeah, on the right side.
The left is what was approved previously.
Okay, I see a little brown line going through those green areas. Is that the walkway?
That is the nature path, yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
And member Robinson.
Yeah, just a question, you know, just a question of, you know, if all, everyone was home, and you had to evacuate that, the housing area, how long would it take you with that one exit to get all the families out, get all of the cars out of there? Estimate?
Minutes, less than an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have, there's many, many, many subdivisions that have much, you see the requirement in most municipalities is a hundred, sometimes it's two hundred for one exit, and that's all decided by...
Yeah, but do you have that many ballnecks? When you have units like that, you got...
No, typically, no. I mean, we're building that road really high, so we don't think we're going to be problems getting in and out of there. I mean, it's eighty-six lots, and there's only less, I guess there's about half of them are west of that, so that's not unusual.
Member Jordan.
Yeah, there's a minimum forty-five feet for the pie-shaped lots in front.
Yes, sir.
Right, so how wide are the houses going to be in those areas?
We have, for every lot, the minimum building pad is forty by seventy.
Okay.
So basically, what happened is the pile lots, even though they're larger in size, they're narrow at the front.
Right.
A lot of municipalities allow you to have smaller frontage as long as you meet the setback, the lot width at the setback line, which is what we have.
Are they going to be allowed to put fences up between property?
Yeah, I mean, just like any other subdivision.
Is this like quarter-acre lots?
They're about five thousand square feet, so they're about an eighth of an acre.
Eighth of an acre? That's pretty small, okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll look for you later, and at this point, we'll call the cards.
Okay, you ready? Charles Long?
My name is Charlie.
Charlie Long.
Charlie Long, Mr. Long.
Typically, the people that are for it speak first?
We only have cards against.
Okay, I'm in the right place then. My name is Charlie Long, I'm a resident of Titusville a long time, but I'm here tonight representing our church, Park Avenue Baptist Church. I'm one of the elders. We've had lots of discussions, lots of thoughts, started a year and a half ago when the bank approached the city about a master plan. We attended every meeting, we had an elder here at every meeting because they're going to be our neighbors, and we want to know what's going on there. Can I take this off?
Yeah, please.
It's our responsibility to know what's going on in our neighborhood. We've, we've had some concerns with the recent changes they want to make, but there's really one central issue that we're concerned about, and that's the safety of our thousand-plus member church and our four hundred and thirty-five student school. Now, when this whole process went down last time, there was a lot of discussion about the importance of a fence to separate four hundred and something students, five days a week, from the activities, from things that could go on, from the issues that were going right next door to us. Members of this council that were here, Mr. Mayor, you were the vice mayor then? Absolutely. You have a background in education, you understand the importance of security for students, especially in this timeframe we live in, the virus is on the front page. But if you remember back a few months ago, the front page was about churches getting, people breaking into churches and killing people, breaking into schools, doing things like that. So we as elders, our responsibility is to protect our people. And along those lines, we spend almost seventy thousand dollars a year with your police department, having uniform officers there five days a week in our school to protect our children, and also on our Sunday services, we have a presence, officers there. So it's a very important issue to us. We spend almost seventy thousand dollars a year doing that. So, and it's our responsibility to do that. So when this whole issue about our neighbors coming up, we didn't come up here and kick and scream and try to argue with the, you know, progress of our growing community, we just wanted to make sure that there was something that would help secure our people. And so, you know, we've consulted professionals along this line, we've sent our, we beefed up our security team inside the church, we've sent them out to get input back, advice back. When the council decided that it was very important to put a fence there, to be a buffer to help prevent something from happening that would be tragic, everybody in the council, I think, was in favor of it. Now, we're here on the...
I'll make more time.
Yeah, thank you. Now, we're here on...
One minute, one minute, I'll favor.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll condense it, but basically, we're here now, and our feeling is this, is because the developer, I know that, I know what a profit is, we all want to make a profit if you're in business, but they made some mistakes going in, and now they want to save, find places to save money. Now, our gentleman that came up here said the reason they wanted to do away with the fence is to keep, save as many trees as they want. Well, I've walked that property. There's bits and pieces there where it's clear, almost clear. There's places where there's a few trees that would have to go, there's a lot of places where you can get in there and take out the underbrush that's there. So we feel very strongly as a fifty... So we feel very strongly as a a fifty-one-year member of our community, our church, that I think is a positive force. We feel very strongly that you leaders of our city that have to make a decision will see the importance of a a an extra fence there, an extra layer of security there for our children. Because if there's a neighborhood, things can go wrong, a wild animal.
Hold up, hold up. Uh, just stay right there anyway. I remember during your question.
Yeah, what type fence are you talking about?
Well, it's described as a wall slash fence. So we're open for, you know, to find a happy ground there. There was no definite definition of a wall, a brick wall or anything. We just want a buffer there. If, God forbid, a wild animal, a dog gets 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 out of leash at the neighborhood and runs over there, we got four hundred children in a playground, right at the border, right at the property line, that could be a big issue. If there's a a police encounter in the neighborhood and a fleeing suspect or whatever comes across there, we want some protection. We also wanna show not only our members, but the parents of the four hundred and thirty-five children are there, we're very concerned about all of that. And if now you leaders of our community feel that, you know, change your mind and it's not important, that would be very.
Not good.
That would be not good. That would be not. That's one way to put it. So we feel very strongly about that, and we're all for growth and having good neighbors and all that. But we're very uncomfortable. You'd almost have to go out there and walk it to see what I'm talking about. He talks about a thirty-foot wide buffer. That's ten yards. That's a first down, Coach.
First down.
You know what it is? It's not that much distance. And it's not a solid buffer that's there. There's the light buffer, there's a few trees, there's more trees, there's light brush, so it's not a real protective buffer.
So, um, just hold on a second. Peggy, there is no requirement for him to have a fence, correct? There's no ordinance, anything that says he has to have a fence next to a school or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. I am aware that a buffer is required between projects, minimum of twenty feet.
Well, you're being asked to change this master plan that was so important a year and a half ago. And with your school background, you know how many, you know, how many schools are there without fences around?
Hey, Charlie, you're just trying to make people feel guilty. You need to stop that.
That's not true. Did you know what I'm talking about?
I know what you're talking about.
And I will say this, not to be, boy, this is the wrong term to use, devil's advocate, but uh, so we'll scratch that. When that whole, um, I I think a lot of it started with Columbine. I don't like to say that word, but uh, uh, the fencing was a mandate from BPS. And so they fenced in every, even Jackson Middle School has a fence all the way down. So nobody, I mean, it Imperial Estates Elementary, the people who lived there didn't do that. But how, I I do look at this different, cuz I do recall that, um, I believe it was all, well, the five that were here, uh, felt the same way. We can, we can have this, but we have a school here, and I'd like to do something with that, so we will, we will follow up in just a minute, see where we're at.
Thank you.
All right.
I I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this to you, though, um, and don't take it the wrong way. But because you believe there is a requirement, what is preventing you from putting the fence up?
Well, we were told that they would do it. That's part of the reasons a lot of men.
That's what I need to hear, that there was communication that they would do it.
Absolutely. They agreed to it.
All right. I guess we need to bring the owner back up and put pressure on him.
Yeah, we will do that, but I'm gonna go through some more cards. Thank you. Uh, call the next card, please.
David Pugh.
David Pugh.
Good evening. My name is David Pugh, thirty-seven fifty Oak Hill Drive. I'm also an elder at the church, and uh, my t, my wife is actually a teacher there. And I'm just gonna real quickly reiterate what uh, Charlie said. Uh, you guys were very gracious of giving him some time, and I just wanna relinquish the rest of my time.
Thank you. Any questions? I see none. Thank you. Next card.
Helen Beverly.
Uh, yeah, um, I saw Mr. Moyer at uh, on P and Z on TV. He, he likes the facts. I checked his house. He lives in Indian, Indian Harbor Beach. He doesn't live in a zero-lot line home. And uh, Holiday Builders only bought this land for a million dollars. And the reason why we're all these, the big discussion last time was, um, people want smaller homes. Well, now, we're in all these. A fact, uh, you go to Market Watch, people want bigger homes now, cuz they're quarantined on their home. Another fact is, there's two threatened species that live on this property. Gopher tortoises, and I don't think I need to tell you what we need to do for gopher tortoises. There's a gentleman before that. And indigo, indigo snakes. Now, they're protected under the um, federal protection, the USF, uh, US Fish and Wildlife Service. And I've already communicated with the state agencies and questions, and the federal agencies and questions about the the species and questions on this pretty good piece of land. And uh, the traffic, I was amazed to hear during planning zoning, there's never been a traffic study on Park Avenue since, what, two, twenty seventeen? This gentleman is proposing basically a gallons worth of traffic and a shot glass worth of road, and this is between two school zones. And talking about the schools, you can't have a state statute, another fact, you can't have a sexual offender live within a thousand feet of a school. And earlier, you were talking about um, connecting neighborhoods. The original plan called for that. Earlier today, you were talking about that. Now, we're, you will drive out of here on Park, then go back into Falcon's Roost. Oh, I'd like to know if there's been any communications between Holiday Builders and the owners of Falcon Roost to buy that. If they paid a million dollars for this lane, they can buy the Falcon's Roost property and combine the two properties, and maybe that would negate the need for the um, lift station. I wouldn't pay three hundred thousand dollars for a home with a lift station. I've been through all the hurricanes, a week without power. Maybe you can combine the sewer line with that road that would connect to Falcon's Roost, so it would negate the need for the lift station. And furthermore, I think these whole proceedings are invalid. There was a gentleman I remember seeing on TV. I think you violated the Fourteenth Amendment rights of due process and equal protection, cuz he wanted to speak as an expert against this, and you allowed um, Mr., I don't know his name, Meter Madness Man, who had an MBA, to speak impro, but you didn't have a gentleman to speak. No, you didn't allow him to speak against it. So that's about it.
Any questions? I see no questions. Thank you so much. Uh, next card.
Kay St. Ange.
Hello. Thank you for listening to me again tonight. This incre, my name is Kay St. Ange. I live at twenty-three sixty Maryland Avenue still. Thank you for listening to me tonight. This incredible parcel of land has magnificent trees, including an an oak seventy-two inches in diameter. Can you imagine? This is forty-eight inches. Seventy-two inches in diameter at breast height and three oaks sixty inches in diameter. As the Marine Resource Council's email to you indicates, the site's large heritage oaks and tree canopy are an ecological asset to Titusville. Please consider MRC's request to work with Mr. Moyer to create a more eco-friendly LID subdivision and preserve more tree canopy. Huntington Park's tree survey and mitigation plan in your agenda packet indicate three trees forty-six to forty-eight inches DBH are to be demolished, as well as nine trees thirty-two to forty-six inches. Council has referred to such large trees as untouchable. Remember that? Untouchable. Council indicates they would have saved Brookshire's forty-six inch trees, but were unaware it was to be removed. Yet Huntington Park's plans to demolish three trees forty-six to forty-eight inches and nine trees thirty-two to forty-six inches. Will you endeavor to save these untouchable trees? A total of a hundred and seventy-one trees twenty inches or greater are to be demolished. Four thousand tree inches lost. Brookshire only was to lose three hundred and fifty. Yes, this developer plans to save the sixty-inch and the seventy-two-inch trees, but he plans on excavating dry retention and comp- compensatory flood storage right next to these huge trees, jeopardizing these trees. We need to think about these trees as the sequoias of Titusville. They are huge. Current code thirty forty indicates the developer agrees to work with staff and adjusts a proposed layout to preserve more trees and specifically mitigation-sized trees. Consider these proposals to preserve large trees. Preserve lots sixty-four and sixty-five, many large trees thirty-eight to forty inches by incorporating the lots into the adjacent tree preservation area.
Hold up, counsel. How much, what do we got?
It's a one-page presentation.
Let's go with two minutes in case we need it. All those in favor, do I have a second? In favor?
Thank you very much. Preserve a forty-eight inch oak in the north cul-de-sac in a tree island right here. That is a forty-eight inch oak tree, right next to this tree island here. There might need to be some adjustments made to, for that tree island, but that's what the code requires, adjustments. Preserve nineteen trees, nineteen twenty to thirty-six inch DBH set to be demolished by this dry retention area, which is right next to the sixty-inch trees that might be jeopardized by excavating a dry retention area. LID strategies are more effective than dry retention ponds. Ask St. John's to eliminate this pond. Forests absorb rainfall at twelve inches an hour, fourteen times more than grass. One oak can consume forty thousand gallons of water per year, or fifty-eight gallons from a half-inch rain. So preserving these nineteen-inch trees might be more effective stormwater management than a dry retention pond. Work towards that. Three trees thirty-six to thirty-eight inches might be saved on the edge of other lots. What will you do to save the untouchable trees in this site? Require staff and developer to adjust layout to save trees per current code. Ask Mr. Moyer to work with staff and MRC, Marine Resource Council, to create a more eco-friendly LID subdivision and preserve more large trees. Do you have any questions?
Member Jordan?
Yes, I do, for sure. Uh, first of all, um, you you would agree that he has done a wonderful job of putting um, this map together to save as much as possible on this property. You would agree with that, right?
No, I agree that he can do much more.
Uh, no, you you should agree that he has done a really good job of preserving a lot of trees as it is.
No, I believe he could do a lot more with LID strategies. With LID strategies, he would not need to remove near as many mitigation-sized trees.
All right.
Including these nineteen trees right here.
You're saying nineteen trees are trees over ninety? I I couldn't.
No, nineteen trees, uh, from twenty to thirty-eight inches will be removed right here, including a large cluster of trees right on the edge of the property line and the dry retention pond. This dry retention pond is likely unnecessary. The Marine Resource Council, who works with the St. John's all the time, have determined that that is a great possibility. It would be unnecessary. And also, these trees sixty inches would be jeopardized by the digging of a dry retention pond.
I understand, and that's where I was going, because every area that you have here there, I'm sure, even if he tried to save the trees, it, they would be damaged by the property development around them. So he end up, he would end up having to uh, actually eliminate more property for his development. Isn't that correct?
No, sir, I disagree.
Okay.
If if these sixty-inch trees right here, if the forest was left there, those sixty-inch trees would likely survive. There, the seventy-two inch tree is next to a compensatory storage pond that will also need digging out, and that excavation could likely destroy those trees. It takes a while for the excavation. It might be five, six years down the road, but those trees will suffer.
I understand, I understand. What what I'm trying to understand is, um, you went to P and Z, I assume, correct? And you explained the same thing to them? Yes? Yes?
Yes, but I did add certain elements to this.
But I don't see any caveats on their approval based on what you requested, correct? They did not have any kind of changes to?
Their their focus was, seemed to me, to be largely on the access and concerns about crossing over this road. If that road were to be blocked, you cannot drive on a wetland. If that road were to be blocked, there is no way you could drive on that wetland to get out of this property. I could see why that was their main concern for the safety of these citizens. Should there be a fire, or should that road be blocked? Of course, they set that as a high priority.
What 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 I like to get to when you're doing any kind of development is to be reasonable with the request that you have on someone who owns property. People have property rights. Do you agree with that, right?
Yes, but I think reasonably, the term reasonable is subject to.
Interpretation.
Interpretation.
Right. Well, when I own the property, I think I have the the right to say what's reasonable.
I understand that the city government has a right to make land development regulations, and there, the land development regulation, uh, let me see, section thirty forty indicates the developer agrees to work with staff and adjust the proposed layout to preserve more trees and specifically to preserve mitigation-sized trees. That is what I'm asking to happen.
Okay, so Peggy, has there been any conversation about trying to preserve more trees on this property?
Uh, yes, sir. The design for the Road B cul-de-sac was adjusted to protect tree number five. Discussion regarding stormwater tract four prevented impacts to the row of trees adjacent to the pond, the area near trees one forty-six through two oh four. The grading associated with lots thirty, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-six, sixty-eight, seventy-one, and seventy-three were amended to provide adequate protection for the adjacent trees. And if I could just comment, our code is one of the few that mandates that there only be dry retention ponds unless there's a specific reason. So, um, the idea that where most communities are used to seeing wet retention ponds, in the city of Titusville, we require dry, unless there's a specific reason.
So you feel pretty confident that the developer has done a great job of trying to preserve as many trees as possible?
I think that the staff would not have provided this to you, um, this sketch plot to you unless they felt that they had done their very best. Now, the code as written that says the applicant agrees to work with staff, I find extraordinarily difficult to determine when that's been met and when it hasn't. But I can tell you that there were significant changes to this development related to trees.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Member Stokel.
Thank you. Um, so you marked on some of these lots where trees are. What would be your, I don't see how they could preserve those without moving the entire subdivision.
No, I disagree.
Okay, how would you save those trees, particularly on lot sixty-four?
Yeah, sixty-four.
Yes, well, there is a large cluster of trees here, that of large trees, forty-six inch, forty-eight inches. Uh, council, as I will remind you again, said those are considered untouchable trees. So when you say something is untouchable and you promise the citizens that those will be untouched, what is it that you are willing to do to preserve those trees? You didn't say, oh, but we would make sure every lot got to be developed. You said, we will make them untouchable. We will preserve them. I'm asking that those two lots, at least one of them, but likely two of them, would need to be set aside to add to the tree preservation area that is existing right along here anyways, so you could have access to the trail that way. You could have, put uh, other recreational amenities on those two lots as well. There would be tree preservation areas, just as these other areas are, because there are untouchable trees on those two lots. That there, there are not that big a trees on the other lots. I've studied the tree survey for hours. Okay, there are only three forty-eight inch trees, forty-six to forty-eight inch trees. Uh, if you had a sequoia in your backyard and somebody, and you wanted to build a house in your lot, would you cut down the? and you wanted to build a house in your lot, would you cut down the sequoia to cut them, to build your house? Would you?
If you had to, yes.
No, I wouldn't do that. I would choose to save the sequoia, which is our heritage. You have asked to define heritage trees and you've asked, said that you want to preserve and label them untouchable.
And I think...
Well, hold on. Member Stokel, are you done?
I guess my last question would be then, you also have it marked, it looks like we're on the north, or I guess it would be technically the south, the cul-de-sac area.
Yes.
What would be your recommendation there since that looks like it's the road?
There is an island, if you look at, there is a piece of land, a round circle of land in the middle of that cul-de-sac. It's called an island. And that tree could be preserved on that island. I sent you two pictures.
Yeah, I have them.
Yes, so that's exactly what could be done. Yes, the layout would need to be adjusted as per the code to make sure the tree is preserved and not left in the middle of the road. But that's what the code requests you to do, is to make adjustments in layout to preserve mitigation sized trees. There are, to answer your question, there are other areas where trees thirty-six inches and larger could be saved if only a slight adjustment were made to the size of the dry retention pond, for instance. So slight changes in the border of a certain lot size or in the border of a dry retention pond could save several more trees, thirty-two to forty-six inches.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I want to make one correction.
Okay.
Okay, we said we wanted to preserve heritage trees, but we also understood that there might be times when we couldn't.
And I'm just asking you to try to save the heritage trees, the forty-six to forty-eight inch trees.
Mr. Parrish. Would it be possible to change the tree that's in the cul-de-sac where that could be saved?
Are you asking, can it be transferred over there?
This area right, right here.
Yeah, the one that's closest to the cul-de-sac, or in the cul-de-sac but closest to that little landscape area? I mean, I guess the applicant could probably certainly adjust the layout of this to save that particular tree inside the center of that cul-de-sac, but I guess...
I think you have to talk about what are the impacts to the wetlands versus that tree. And there's requirements there for a certain turning radius so you can get a fire truck around it. This is not just a matter of picking up a dot and moving it. It is possible that the engineers could work that out, but at this point, we're just at the sketch plot stage.
There'll be some give and take. So you're saving one tree might cause another different tree to be taken out depending on the design.
Okay. I think that it's not as easy as just... I mean, I can't pick the dot up and move it? Well, you could try. But I've seen engineers at work and it's a struggle to put all of the requirements that are in the code and make it work. And then the other question I had is, is dry retention area? What else could we do? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting, I'm getting scolded. That's a compensatory storage issue, so it's a volumetric issue. I think Mr. Moyer would be best able to explain the engineering behind that. Okay. Where is Mr. Moyer?
Well, hold on one second. How many cards do we have left?
We have three.
Alright, let me go ahead and go through and let him answer all of them and have these questions from Mr. Moyer when it comes back in the end. Mr. Jordan, I think, are you good?
Just one question, actually, is for Brad. The tree that's in the cul-de-sac, how large was it?
Forty-eight.
So forty-eight inches, you know, you just can't take forty-eight inches and say, "Okay, we're going to try to save forty-eight inches." There's a root system.
Yes.
So if you've got a root system, it usually stretches out further than the branches, right? So there is no way to say we're going to move, if it was even possible, to move the driveway some. It's going to be more than the forty-eight inch diameter, which could make it impossible for the developer to develop the land, right? And I guess my point is, we can argue this all we want. Staff has already said that they have looked at this, have worked with the developer to save as many trees as possible. For us to try to re-engineer the thing right now, to me, is doing a disservice to all of us. So I just don't want to be sitting here arguing about something we cannot fix for sure when I think we've got a good map of what is potentially could be a good development. That's my opinion, so.
Any more questions from counsel? I see none. Thank you very much. Next card, please.
Tony Shifalo.
Tony Shifalo, seven fifteen Tropic Street. I'm not particularly opposed to this development. The engineer, sir, has made great changes, I think, to accommodate and try and save trees. But you know how it is when you have a dog or a cat you love and you see other animals being mistreated or abandoned and you just feel awful? Once I started learning the science of trees and the secret life of plants, I became so in awe of how they communicate, how trees communicate with one another, how they share nutrients, how they cooperate with one another, how they send out stress signals when there's fire or drought or plague coming their way. It's totally incredible. And so I become very overwhelmed and sad when I drive down the 405 and I see that acreage, I'm not even sure what the development is going to be. Where, one day I was going to the Aldi and there was all trees. And the next day I drove by and it was all clear cut, except for a buffer along the street. And I looked in and I saw piles and piles of wood that's just going to be destroyed. So it was very sad for me. And I just wanted to say, you know, you can clear cut and plant saplings and twigs in a front yard. And I'll bet nobody in this room will live long enough to see those become great ancient trees like the ones that we're just willy-nilly cutting down all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to add to that, that, you know, we had a lot of meetings on that clear cut. And I think that's one reason applicants before us have to go through so much. And it does seem like this applicant has done a good job of trying to save the trees he can save. And there's just no question, I mean, I don't like seeing trees go down either. I mean, it's, when you said about the pet, you know, I sometimes get, not pun intended again, but you get sappy. And, yeah, I swear it wasn't intended. But it's tough. And then I do recall the untouchables. I'll be honest with you, I felt like I was more asking what should an untouchable be? There should be something that's untouchable. I don't recall certain inches and all that. I get that we can say, you know, any tree that's standing and looking good and has a chance to grow, we shouldn't cut down. But there's got to be a compromise. And where I see it more clearly than I've ever seen it, when we were talking about this a couple of years ago, or a year and a half, whenever we were doing all that tree changing and trying to get serious about that. My grandkids play soccer down at a park in Vieira. And it is thick with trees all around the soccer field. But then when you, maybe ten yards, maybe fifteen between the forest, because that's really what it is, and then the fields, there's like three of them. And I sat there and I thought, well, there's no question in my mind that used to be the same forest that's behind me here. But sometimes you have to do that to have a soccer field or to have a growth area. I can tell you that you guys are very, that's fantastic, you're very focused on trees. And we love trees too. But we also love to have a place for our people who are moving here to live. And we also want to keep our kids safe in the church. And we've got all kinds of things to deal with here. And we can't go all one way. And I think one of the things that struck me that we need to think about, as member Jordan noted, you know, it's a property owner, sometime, we just can't keep telling people what to do with their property. We can certainly have ordinances and we're working on those things. And I think that this young man has done a great job of trying to save trees and make a nice environmental area. That being said, next card.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty-point Set Avenue. And I'm here that I'm opposed to what you're doing. The fact is, it was about two weeks ago, I complained to my, one of my church elders about the city of Titusville still being corrupt and dishonest. Just happens to be the same church here. So I'm going to explain to you what some of your corruption is doing to me. It's insulting, demeaning, assassination of character, what you guys are doing, except for Mr. Robinson, Pastor Robinson. And I've gone to my church because I'm fed up with it. I'm at the end of my rope. I'm at the end of my rope with all you guys. And you do it too, Mr.... Is it, I've got so much insulting from you, also Dr. Stokel.
Stop the clock. Take a deep breath and calm down. Take a deep breath.
Yes, sir.
Slow it down. And I'd really like you to talk about the trees. It's a big deal here. Or Huntington Park. Alright, you good? Yes.
Ready?
Go.
Okay, now, I'm opposed to what you guys are doing. And as far as Huntington Park, I'm voting neither on this. But the thing is, is that you've got, you are promoting and supporting a report by GeoSynTech that says that I'm a worthless, no-good engineer. And you've been doing it for over twenty-three months. That's disgusting, disgusting. I can't believe you guys are doing it. And you're getting away with it. And that concludes Mr. Brew. And I'm fed up with it. It's bad for my family, me, my profession, and the public. And I will continue doing on this same thing. But the thing is, I want the church to know, and they're hearing it right now, that by golly, you guys are being unfair, you're demeaning, defamation and so forth. That report does not even exist. GeoSynTech says it doesn't exist, your records say, but you continue pretending that this report that defames me, assassinates my character exists. It doesn't exist. You're liars. You're cheats, you're frauds, especially your shyster city manager here. It's no good. And at least, my church is hearing about it right here, right here. You want me to say something about Huntington Park?
Let's move on. And I don't want to do that.
Okay.
I don't want to do that.
I'm going to say you're out of order.
Go ahead. Start the clock.
Okay. Mr., you're out of order. Now, I won't do it. But anyhow, what I'm going to say is that what you're doing, what all of you guys are doing, is unfair to me, except for Mr. Robinson. And it's unfair to my family. It's lying and cheating. It's fraud. It's defamation. It's everything else. You have no business doing it. There's no truth at all to it. There is no report. There is no report. You made it up. You've made it up. You made it up. It doesn't exist. So anyhow, what you're doing is, as far as I'm concerned, is fraud. I've checked my attorney. There's no way he says that I can sue you guys. I've been hoping that you would somehow get me to court so I would bring you up to court and expose your fraud. Right now, you have it recorded, affidavit of fraud in the public records. And you're going to have it for the rest of your life. Thank you. And you're going to have also this other affidavit too. May I have more time, please?
I see none. I know. Okay, any more cards?
We have one more card. Kathleen Burson.
Good evening, Kathleen Burson, landscape architect, Titusville. I too would like to tell Stan through you that he's, as a good friend of mine, I would love to hear of his engineering experience in regards to these projects too. So I echo your statement and, you know, Stan and I will have a talk. So I appreciate your patience and I know it's... You've been patient for a long time. I know he has very significant issues with the city. So it breaks my heart. Okay, I sent you an email regarding this project. Did anybody receive that? Okay, so I am asking you to save some more trees, just as Kay is. And I want to tell you how we can do that. Okay, first of all, could I ask a question of Mr. Moyer through you guys? Has this gone to St. John's yet?
City Attorney. Can we ask a question? Stop the clock.
Sure, I would let Ms. Burson make all her statements and she's asking you to ask questions. And then when he comes up for rebuttal, you can certainly ask anything you think's appropriate of Mr. Moyer at that time.
It's just a yes or no question. And I kind of need to know that answer. What?
Start the clock.
What was his answer?
He just said yes to your question.
Yes, he has been to St. John's. It is approved by St. John's?
Maybe he didn't hear your question. What was your question again?
Okay, I'm going to rephrase it. Has it been approved by St. John's?
Has it been approved by St. John's?
Okay. Alright, so I can go on. Thank you for breaking that time up. Okay, so how can we save more trees? We can employ LID to this project. Some of the techniques that could be done are pervious pavement. So how would this save trees? Pervious pavement reduces your stormwater runoff. So by reducing the stormwater runoff, you reduce your need for stormwater storage. Also, we could do vegetative swales, which stormwater ponds actually are a design feature of the past. They are becoming unacceptable in many jurisdictions. As a landscape architecture professional, I deal with the city and county codes every day. To do LID is what they want and they're not allowing the stormwater ponds anymore. Now, we do vegetated ponds. Those are allowed. Those are wanted because they clean and they break down the pollutants to the basic components, so they're harmless. You know, even bacteria, even fuel pollution. It can be broken down by the soil and the mulch. It's amazing. I know it's like, really? But it really does. So you also received an email from MRC, yes, and Marine Resources Council. So what they're asking, and what I'm asking you tonight, is to save some of these trees.
Continue that.
Okay, thank you. Is to allow the Marine Resources Council, and I've done this before on projects I've done, is to say, "We want to employ these LID practices so we can save more trees." They will work with you. They want to see this. They just haven't... One of the things that the MRC mentioned in their email to you is that that they've, they work with the city, I mean, they work with, MRC works with St. John's to do the, to employ these practices. The books of St. John's, and this is what I meant to say.
Hold on one second. We're going to pass that thought. One more minute, one more minute.
Thank you.
Yes, approved.
Thank you.
One more minute.
Okay, so the, St. John's is, their codes are forty years old. Okay, so we, they want to come ahead with this, and they are. They're in the process of doing that. But in the meantime, we can work with St. John's. We could say, "Hey, look, if we do it this way and this way, can, will this be acceptable?" So a lot can be done with this project to make it, to reduce the stormwater volume and clean the water up better before it goes into the St. John's River. So I would ask you to table the project so we can have the time. Let me go back to what Ms. Bisaka said. This is just the sketch plot. This is just the beginning of this design. It is not approved by St. John's yet. So there's still the opportunity to work with St. John's to employ some of these LID practices. And some are expensive, some are not expensive. So we could save some more of these trees. I'd also like, have two requests.
Hit them. Hit the two requests and we're done.
Pardon, okay. Please, if you go ahead with the fence on the north buffer, please keep that twenty-foot buffer to save some of that vegetation. I drove by there. I drove by there, yeah, the other day. We went into the Park Avenue parking lot so we could see what was along that edge for the trees. There's beautiful scrub oaks in there. I'd hate to see that twenty-foot go away.
Yeah, two points, two things you want to see?
Yes, the other one is for that seventy-two-inch oak. Could you please pull that pond away to make sure we don't destroy the root system of that tree?
I don't know about that. I'm not going.
No, could you ask, could you ask Bruce Moya to do that? To pull that pond away? It's getting, I don't, you can't, I don't really know the measurement. When you locate a tree in the field, you don't know exactly, exactly where that tree is by GPS. It could be within ten to twenty feet of where it is. So we don't want to, we don't, we want to make sure those excavators don't get too close to that root system. So if you pull the pond a little bit further away, you give yourself a better buffer. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the time.
All right, Member Jordan.
I, I don't even know where to start. You know, I, I'm going to apologize right now because it's getting late and I get cranky when it starts getting late. But I, I don't know of another project where I got all this land and I'm using, what? A third of what I can use, you know, to develop? And it happened to be LID. I mean, he's doing everything, but we're asking for more. You're, if I was developer and I'm looking at this and I'm saying, God, you asked me for more? Why am I even developing this thing? You know, because I'm, I'm losing my shirt here because I went from a hundred and ten to eighty-six, um, pieces of property and I still want to do it. Now, I do, I, I will say that I have this affinity for big trees. Because I used to, I went to a forest one day and I saw this big tree and I, I did hug it. It was nice, you know? I really hugged the tree. I said, boy, this is a beautiful tree for sure. But we got to realize something here. You know, this has been going on a long time. I think this developer has done a fantastic job on a piece of property that is just out there. I do have a concern, because I love Charlie. I do have a concern about safety with, uh, right next to, uh, a school. But I must tell you, and I asked Charlie this in jest, uh, and he answered me. And, um, so I like to hear the communication that went along with that. Charlie saying, the developer said they would put the fence there. If that's the case, I like to hear the developer say they would put it there. But he, if he did not say that, as a school owner myself, we put a fence up because we had to protect our, our kids. So, and I happen to know Park Avenue does have a lot of money for sure. But I, I certainly would ask that we bring, um, the developer back up and...
Oh, well, he can, he has, he's going to come up. That's, we got a list of questions, I'm sure.
Okay.
Uh, next card.
We have no more cards.
Okay, applicant. I think we all, we're going to have questions.
Thank you for the opportunity to respond. I guess being a coach, you probably heard this phrase before, dogpile.
Pilot, pilot.
I appreciate your, your, your comments, Mr. Jordan. I definitely appreciate that because we have made every effort. We, this is not the, our first draft of this layout that you see. We've, we've gone back and forth with staff to, to save as many trees as possible. One thing I did, do want is to, to also say is that maybe we're not seeing the forest through the trees. We only, we're only showing the trees that exist in the uplands. We're not showing the trees that are in the wetlands. We're preserving every single one of those. And I guarantee, there's thousands of inches of trees we're preserving in that thirty-five-acre wetland that comes through the middle of our property that's going to make this a beautiful, beautiful development. And I guarantee, there's large trees in there that we didn't even put on the survey because we didn't go in the wetlands to survey the trees because we weren't impacting the wetlands, uh, in those areas. So we didn't include them. So I can only imagine how many trees are in there. Not to mention all the trees that were going to be, that we're going to preserve that are twenty inches and below. One thing that Kate did not mention, um, she harped on the trees we're taking out, but she didn't mention the trees we're saving. We are saving that seventy-two-inch tree. We'll make every effort to save that seventy-two-inch tree. On our last project we're doing on Wickham Road, we saved an eighty-four-inch tree. You're talking about a nice tree. That's a nice tree. We're saving three sixty-inch trees. We've jockeyed this project multiple times to minimize the impact of trees. But Kay's very passionate and I appreciate her passion, but we don't, we can't design this in a bubble. The trees are not the only issue. We have to bring in fill. We have to dig sewer lines and water lines. We have to put in retention ponds. And I, you know, I do this every day, all day long. I can't even count how many St. John's permits I've got. I don't know how many St. John's permits they have gotten in their lifetime and done stormwater designs, but I imagine it's pretty low, if any. And I know this is quasi-judicial. So we are not aware of any alternate stormwater systems that are being approved by St. John's that do not meet the water quality and volume and treatment requirements in their code. They're not forty years old. They've been updated over the years. They're, they're more strict now than they've ever been with BMP requirements for pollutant loading requirements that we cannot exceed the pre and post on any pollutant level for phosphorus or nitrogen leaving the site than currently leaves the site now. So we can't by code, by St. John's, send any more pollutants out to the river than are going there currently. And there are some that go there right now. Naturally occurs. So we can't exceed that with our development. So we have to meet those standards. I don't know of any St. John's requirements that says we can plant a tree in lieu of so much volume of, of storage. I, I've yet to see that requirement. So with compensated storage, utilities, stormwater, the import of fill, which on this site is going to be pretty high, higher than normal, so that's a huge cost to the developer to make this thing happen. Not to mention building a lift station for only a six, eighty-six lot subdivision. Those things are very expensive. He's already lost twenty-four lots. He's reduced his lot count by twenty percent. That's unheard of. And, and so, you know, we're, this thing is going to be gorgeous. We just really want the opportunity to build this and the developer really wants to move forward. We are going to do whatever we can through the design process to save trees we can. We're going to show, because we're going to show a lot more trees on our design plan. So we're going to have to work with them to see what we can save. But we can't save that forty-eight-inch tree without going and impacting the wetlands. And wetlands, they don't want us to impact wetlands. That's St. John's makes you avoid that. And you can't run a sewer line through a tree and save the tree. So we've got to serve those lots with sewer and water and it's just, it's just impractical. So that's why we're, we're clustering, which is LID. Cluster your development in a small area, preserve everything around it. And we feel that we've done that very well. The only other issue I really want to address is the church. Obviously, we don't want to take out any trees. I'm looking at the aerial. The church, we, we bought the overflow parking lot. We're about five hundred feet, our, like, we have two lots within about five hundred feet of the church building. And to the north, you have about thirteen lots that are about a hundred feet from the building. So I don't know if our residents are any different from those residents as far as safety. I don't know. But we're willing to build a six-foot opaque fence. I think that's reasonable. We'll build it on that north property line up to the preservation area. Whether it be vinyl or wood, but something opaque. I really don't want to do a wall because I don't want to have to dig that footer and tear up all those trees. So a fence, I think we can make it happen. I think we can agree to that. So I hope that's a good enough compromise to address that concern. So with that being said, I'll answer any questions.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Moya, you, you have done a gorgeous job. And I know that we're, we're second guessing you. I guess for me, I'm, I'm looking at that cul-de-sac with the tree in it. And I hated this in Vieira, but that roundabout with the tree in it, I mean, it's really beautiful.
You know, must they paid for that tree to be moved there?
I know, and I'm like, and you've got one right there.
It took them a year to do the root pruning. That was Joseph Duda's favorite tree. And he had it moved from another part of the property. And they took them a year to root prune it.
Yeah.
That's...
But you already have a tree. That was my thought was, you know, hey, if we can move this over, you know? I, I don't know if that'll work or not, but I was like, you got your, you got your roundabout there. You know? And the other question I really had was the dry retention area.
Yes.
If we do LID, does that get rid of the dry retention areas? Is that something that Mr. Moya might want to look at? I don't know the answer to that.
I don't either. I'm not the engineer. Do you know?
I was just going to say, based on our experience and the engineering, the way he applies that section of the code, is that the applicant does have the ability to demonstrate whether dry retention cannot be put into the site. And we'll have to demonstrate that in some way.
So what does that take?
That's typically done during the site plan review. So when we, at the next stage, after the sketch plat is approved, then we go forward with the, the detailed engineering and the stormwater review to see what is really possible.
Okay. That's fair.
Okay.
Is that fair? Okay.
Okay, uh, council, any more questions for the applicant?
I want to make a motion.
Let me just make sure there's none for him. So I'm sitting down. No more questions. Thank you very much, sir. We are, question here, we, we just discussed in my mind both nine C and twelve A.
No, sir, you're on, you're on nine C right now.
I know, we're on nine C. We can't vote them together. That's not what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
But we have to vote them separate.
Yes, sir.
As I was saying, even though we certainly discussed the plat, we went over everything else. So we got to vote them separate. That's all I got to do, separate.
Yes, sir. And, and I'll read for the record what twelve A, what the P and Z's recommendation is.
All right, so, right, okay, I, I, I hear you.
Sir, Mayor, I just want to point out, we did, the rezoning is the rezoning and a master plan. So that's what you're voting on now.
Exactly.
The sketch plat, that report hasn't been read to you. That item is twelve A.
And I get that.
To the extent there's different criteria.
It still has to be read.
And, well, correct. And to the extent anyone has comments related to the sketch plat that were not related to a master plan or rezoning because they're two different items.
Good luck separating that.
God, Jesus.
I tried.
I know, you did try. I appreciate that too.
All right, nine C.
Attorneys. Wonder about attorneys sometimes. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, uh, nine C rezoning number two, there's twenty, twenty Huntington Park.
I have a motion and I don't need a second.
Uh, I have a second with conditions being, and I'm not sure if this is where I would need to do it, the fence and the generator.
That would be, that would be your question.
Am I appropriate?
Those could go into the master plan this morning.
Okay. And that would, that's a motion. I got a motion, I got a second. Um, roll call vote.
Okay, and I just want to clarify, this does not include P and Z's recommendation, correct?
P and Z.
No, correct.
No, no, we don't want that, yeah.
Okay. Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
No.
No. Two, three, four. Pass is four, one. Uh, twelve A.
Yes, sir, we're on twelve A, which is Huntington Park sketch plat. On January sixth, twenty twenty-one, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with the condition of an additional, with the addition of a pedestrian path between Huntington Park and Falcon Roost, a project that will be next to it based on feasibility. The vote was four yes, three no from Planning and Zoning. The applicant, on behalf of the owners, requesting to submit a site plan for approximately seventy-nine, plus or minus acre property located west of Park Avenue, north of Country Club Drive, consisting, um, consistent with rezoning application two dash, two twenty, request proposes eighty-six single-family homes with one access point onto Park Avenue. Portions of the development are also dedicated as recreational areas, open space, wetland conservation areas, flood compensatory storage areas, stormwater management, and infrastructure improvements. On January sixth, twenty twenty-one, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with the condition, the addition of a pedestrian path between Huntington Park and Falcon Roost, a provision that will be next to it based on the feasibility. Vote was four yes, three no. Member Murray and Chairman Severs clarified the concerns of the Planning and Zoning Commission to be conveyed to the city council. Number one, public safety of the Ingrah, Grass Egress. Number two, the desire to have a landscape plan for retention areas based on section six point one point eight of the technical manual. Number three, stormwater concerns regarding stormwater retention and the condition of existing stormwater and sewer infrastructure adjacent to the site in which the project will connect. And number four, potential addition of a walking path connecting Huntington Park with Falcon Roost. The procedures for this sketch plat approval are part of your packet.
All right, thank you, staff.
As I said previously, the staff has reviewed this for the consistency with the sketch plat requirements and has found that it has met all of those requirements. I will comment that there was a concurrency evaluation done for Park Avenue in July of twenty, of two thousand eighteen, which was the last time that this came to you, and that it met the concurrency on the road. There will be a requirement for a traffic study at the next part of this process.
Very good. Uh, council questions for staff, Vice Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I did have a question, though.
Well, go ahead and ask it.
Um, my understanding is Mr. Moya did not want to have a sidewalk between this development and Falcons, Falcons Roost. Am I correct?
No, we would provide the pedestrian connection.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Applicant, we're on the sketch plat. I think we've talked about it all, but if you want to come up and talk more, you're more than welcome to. All right, thank you very much. Call cards.
We have two cards. It's Kay Saintong.
I was getting ready to take a break. Yeah, right after this.
I just have a quick question. You were asking about walking between Falcon Roost and Huntington Park. So if I were to, uh, I understand the roads are going to be public roads in Huntington Park. And so if I wanted to walk on the trails of Huntington Park in order to view these sixty-inch and seventy-two-inch trees, would that be trespassing? It would not be trespassing? Thank you very much.
Next card.
Last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnson, uh, and I'm a member of that, that church. And so is some other people here. And, uh, so what you've done is, uh, and I'm, I'm opposed to, to your voting on this and neither on that. But I'm opposed to you treating me like dirt. You treat me like crap. And, uh, it's been, this been, it began February the twelfth, two thousand nineteen. So here's, here's, here's one of the things. For example, it says seventy thousand dollars here. It says seventy thousand dollars here. It says malicious, seventy thousand dollars here, malicious lies, fraud, so forth, by city manager and mayor, city manager and mayor, that title was Mayor, uh, Mayor, uh, Johnson. And, and here's, here's another one, lies, 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 seventy thousand dollars, seventy thousand dollars. See, what, what you guys, what was claimed on February the twelfth, two thousand nineteen at the council meeting is the city paid seventy thousand dollars for this report and the city can't find the report. But by golly, we're still, we're going to still claim that Stan Johnson is a worthless, no-good engineer as, as reported by these other professional engineers. And by golly, he's going to, this, this guy, shyster right here, city manager, by golly, you're going to support him? And, and, and Jo- Joelyne Nelson, by golly, she was, she was there. She was there and she's nodding her head, yep, 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 that's true. Stan Johnson, we've got this seventy thousand dollar report, but we can't find it. So you guys keep treating me like dirt, like crap for thirty, twenty-three months because you're so arrogant and full of pride that you won't admit that it's not true. Arrogance, full of pride. That's what you guys are. Here, 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 here. And Mrs. Stokel doesn't want to look at this. But I can't believe that you guys are doing that. So in other words, you spend over half an hour on trees, but you won't correct the lies that you're doing. that you're doing, and you continue it. In other words, when, when Mayor Johnson was talking about, he pointed to over 400 pages that I had written and said, by golly, the engineer said, they said absolutely, almost everything Stan Johnson wrote was absolutely nothing, but you don't even have an engineer, there's no report, you just made up the story, and you guys support it. So let's, let's continue keeping Stan Johnson like crap. Who cares about him, his profession? He's only been here about 50 years, he's got a family and so forth like that, five generations, treat him like dirt, that's what you guys do, all of you. La, 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 all of you, all of you, liars, cheats, fraudsters, shysters, nothing good about it. I'm fed up with it, I'm fed up to here with it. And you guys go ahead and do it, so you go ahead and do it. By golly, I'm going to make noise about it, I'm going to continue, thank you. May I have another minute? Thank you.
Any other cards? All right. Member Jordan, I'm looking for you. 12A.
Was it 12A?
We moved 12A up under nine C.
Can I do it?
Yes, you please do. Go ahead, Member Robinson.
Peggy, Peggy, you said that there's going to be a traffic study at, at some point now if this is approved?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
That's what I heard you say.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Member Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve 12E Huntington Park Sketch Plat.
Vice Mayor. We have a, a motion and a second, and roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
What?
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Before we move into the CUPs, we are going to take a recess. Five, let's go at.
Poor Ashley.
10:05. There they are.
Here we are.
Yeah.
Hold on one second. We are on nine.
Yeah, we're on nine D, sir.
Nine D, okay, that's what I'm saying. All right, we'll call this meeting back to order, city manager, we move to nine D.
Yes, the applicant, Ashley Smith, yay. PE on behalf of the city of Tidesville is requesting a conditional use permit for the storage or use of a regulated substance in the area of critical concern in order to install an emergency generator at the sanitary sewer lift station located at 725 Buffalo Road, Misslview Lift Station. Subsequent to Hurricane Irma, the city was informed by, was informed of a FEMA grant to fund emergency generators at city lift stations. Seven stations were identified as priority sites for emergency generators based on the location, size, and past history of failures during previous emergencies. Three of these lift stations are located within the area of critical concern but outside of the 750-foot well radius. In accordance with the hazardous materials technical manual, the city is required to obtain a conditional use permit to allow fuel tanks to be installed with the, the emergency generators. The fuel tank size at the Misslview location is 128 gallons in order to provide 48 hours' worth of fuel, as determined by the manufacturer of the generator. The purpose of the generators at the lift station is to prevent lift station failures due to a loss of electricity in an emergency. The proposed, the proposed fuel tanks are above-ground, double-walled containers located under the generator. The tanks meet the secondary containment requirement of the hazardous materials technical manual. In addition, the style of the tank includes pressure monitoring and the city's adding a SCADA to monitor the fuel levels, thus meeting the hazardous material technical manual requirements for monitoring of the tanks. In addition, the city has provided a spill prevention and emergency SOP to be followed in the event of a spill or failure is required. At the January 13th, 2020, Tidesville Environmental Commission considered this request unanimously six-zero, recommended approval with the following conditions. The city explored the feasibility of purchasing other generators which use alternative fuels such as biofuel, propane, or natural gas, and include any findings in the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council agenda. If the generator uses diesel fuel remains the preferred option, add a concrete lip to the concrete pad where the generator is to be installed to act as a third layer of protection and containment. At the January 20th, Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request and approved it seven-zero with three conditions. Number one, obscure the view of the tanks and the generator from a street view with some type of screening. Number two, research the feasibility of the third layer level of containment. And three, include the Tidesville Environmental Commission's recommendations to research alternate fuel sources for future use. Ms. Smith's here as engineer on this, this project and is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Staff, comments?
Sure, I'm just going to be real brief and just remind the council here today that the purpose of this project is related to a FEMA grant that's to prevent hazardous situations during a disaster. And I wanted to emphasize that we meet the code that we're greater than 750 feet from a well. In fact, I brought the specifics, the Misslview Lift Station is approximately 2,450 feet from the nearest city well. The South Lake Plant Lift Station is approximately 3,380 feet from the nearest well, and Imperial States Two is 1,950 feet away from the nearest well. So these far exceed the requirement for 750 feet. In addition to everything that was mentioned, I just wanted to also point out that the code only requires secondary containment, not three levels of containment. And the code also specifies that a double-walled tank, which is what we have specified, meets secondary containment. And so I also was just going to very briefly go over the recommendations from TEC and Planning and Zoning so that, you know, we did do our due diligence in the two weeks as best as we could to research those alternatives. So for natural gas, natural gas is not available to any of these sites, so we simply ruled that out after we determined that. Biodiesel is not recommended by the generator manufacturer, they didn't go into a level of detail on that. I imagine that might be related to that these are commercial generators, not necessarily your at-home generators. I'm also pretty sure that we would have to modify the diesel generator after the fact, and that would void our warranties on those generators. And then lastly, propane was also looked at, and the biggest concern with propane, there are requirements for how close a propane tank can be located to buildings and property lines, and it depends on the size of the propane tank. We weren't able to size those, that would require its own design, but typically the range and distance can be from 10 to 25 feet away from a property line, and so our lift station sites vary in size, and most of these would be unable to accommodate that without major reconfigurations of the whole entire station. And then, I just want to summarize, because I want to stay brief for everyone, that the water resources staff does not recommend any of the conditions that were presented, simply to kind of fall in line with our existing stations and that using diesel is our current generators. We also have the ability to then fuel our own stations during an emergency event where the other three alternatives would require a third-party vendor to provide those fuels, which during a disaster could result in simply not having that, and then the generators don't work, the lift stations aren't running, and that would be a potential overflow. So if you have any more specific questions, I'm happy to answer them, I just wanted to be brief.
Council question, Member Jordan?
Yeah, well done, young lady. You're not listening to me?
She will.
Was she listening to me? Oh, wait, oh, wait.
I'm sorry.
Are you listening to me now?
I'm sorry.
You kind of hurt my feelings because you're listening to Peggy, but anyway, well done. You actually answered most of the questions I had, I, I don't think you answered about the shrubbery.
So the water resources staff is not in favor of screening. I do think we can make a concession easily for the Misslview Lift Station, we're proposing to fence just the generator. The current lift station doesn't have fencing and we don't plan to change that. So you could easily do the kind of green mesh screening just around the generator. The other two are in the existing lift station, generator sites that are currently fenced, and the reason why Water Resources doesn't like screening is for two reasons. The first is security, being able to see, we know someone isn't there that shouldn't be there, someone who might be doing harm, where if it's screened, we can still investigate that, but you wouldn't know what you're going into potentially. And secondly, there's lights associated with the lift stations, and so we have a visual, we're able to see visually the operations when there's alarms and things as you're going by, and we regularly visit the sites. I, we do monitor the sites remotely also, which gives us alarms and everything, but there is a level of comfort of being able to drive by and know there's nothing wrong with the station, too.
What kind of engineer are you?
I'm a civil and environmental engineer.
Very good, I could tell, I'm a civil engineer, too, you know, like, you did very well, I'm so proud of you for sure.
Thank you.
That's all the questions.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
He's getting slap-happy.
Ashley, I sort of like the idea of the concrete, of the lip on the concrete pads, and as
I told Mr. Larisse earlier this week, I'm always the one that says, what if? And having lived through many, many hurricanes where everything's trashing down, and it's crazy, and the tornadoes, you know, you don't, you might see what's going on, on your computer, but you don't necessarily want to run out there and fix it. So is there a problem with putting a lip on the pad?
I wouldn't say that it's impossible, it probably is going to mean that the generators are going to have to move to accommodate the slightly extra space. NEC code requires we have at least three feet around those generators, and they're all, two of them are positioned in the corners purposely to allow vehicles, operation vehicles to still be able to pull in. We'd probably have to shift those. We didn't get to the level of a design with our engineer to determine if it was impossible or not.
If it's possible, I'd like to see that, just, just out of an abundance of caution, because some of those tornadoes and hurricanes are pretty, pretty nasty, and you don't want to be out there fixing something. out there fixing something. So, thank you.
I see no more council questions for staff?
I'm sorry?
I do see another question for some of the staff.
Ashley, I need to understand, even though Vice Mayor Jolene said that, that's not necessary, correct?
The code only requires secondary containment, and it specifically lists double-walled tanks are a form of secondary containment, which is what we're proposing.
Right.
So a concrete containment, in addition to double-walled, would be three levels of containment.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot for sure, so. And what would the cost be?
Our contractor didn't get back to us, I did reach out for that, but a concrete cost, I don't think it would be an exorbitant amount of cost, probably several thousand dollars for each of the three stations.
And did you, did you say FEMA was paying for this?
Yes, we do have a FEMA grant which is paying the full price of these generators.
Only the generators, so we do the, the third level, if you will, we will have to pay for it?
That's a great question. I'm not sure if it would fall under that. There is a chance that we probably would have to pay that cost.
Would you say that that third level is unnecessary?
I would say so.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, any more questions from staff? I see none. Call the cards, please.
We have, excuse me, we have one card, it's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, Registered Professional Engineer, living here in Titusville for many years. I oppose, obviously I oppose what you guys are doing and for your, your conduct tonight and for the last 23 months, I'm not including Mr. Robinson, it's disgusting and disgraceful, and that you're, so I'll continue with this, I didn't finish the, the reading, the subject of my email to you, that's 30 pages or so. And it says, "After disregard for human life," I wrote here, "violation of laws." Oh, you got a lot of violation of laws. "Violation of a constitution," which you made, you swore that you weren't gonna violate the Constitution, but by golly, that's exactly what you do, exactly, repeatedly. And they did it, where'd you, where'd you do it? Over here at Parkland Estates where you put a dam, and, and the permit for your dam says, "holds back 65 million gallons of water without causing any flooding." How can you hold back 65 million gallons of water and not flooding any wa, flood any property? It's not possible. It's impossible. So what you're doing, you're violating the Constitution. Well, anyhow, it goes other, and then what I did, let me read the first paragraphs, here's the first paragraphs I have written on this email, it says, it says, "The City of Titusville is not functioning as a democracy." Absolutely not. "Significant parts of the City of Titusville, including elected officials except for Pastor Robinson, are an unwritten, organized network of shameful dishonesty and cover-up of errors and cover-up of cover-ups of cover-ups of cover-ups, et cetera." That's what we have here in the City of Titusville, especially led by our shyster city manager. Now, what, what is especially interesting tonight is what you've seen, is after I've, I've shared this about the dishonesty regarding this $70,000 report and so forth that doesn't exist, is that, is all of y'all are very comfortable with lying. You're comfortable tonight, all of you are comfortable, just, okay, that's it, we'll just lie some more. So what you really are, just fruitcakes and bozos and clowns and bullies and shysters and bullies, that's what you're doing, you're bullying me. All of you, bullies.
Stop clock.
Nuts.
So we've been through this before, and I, I kinda let you ramble more than I should've, but you're not talking about the topic, are you?
Yes, sir.
And this is, this is, no, you're not. Have you talked at all about the lift station on Buffalo Road?
I'll tell you what, I, that, and, and then, and for, for this item, which I've discussed at great length at the TEC meeting, and she knows that, she knows.
This is a meeting, and you stood up and you put a card in for this item.
Exactly.
And you haven't said a word about it.
And I know a lot about it.
Well, I, I.
I do, I know a lot about it. I was there for, I was there for, for what, was it two hours for that meeting, or three hours?
Here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna start the clock, you're gonna talk about the Buffalo Road lift station, and if you don't, I will assume you don't want to talk anymore. Start the clock.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I object to what you're saying, because I think maybe you should, you should recuse yourself, you recuse yourself as mayor right now, as your position, because you're abusing that position of mayor. You don't tell me what, you don't tell me what to say. You just don't do it.
That's exactly what the mayor does. I'm, that's exactly what the mayor does.
No, sir, I object to that, you should recuse yourself.
The mayor says that you are supposed to be talking about, what, what number is that?
9D.
9D? All I'm asking you to do is stay on topic. And it, it's over now, so go ahead and sit down, because the time is up, and I stopped the clock plenty. I just hope that you can talk about some lift stations when you come up next time.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you.
All right, good. All right. So we are, what, we're 9D?
9D.
All right, council.
Are we doing them all at once?
No, I love to. My light's on.
I've lost everything here, I don't see anything.
Could you reset?
There we go, okay, Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item 9D, conditional use permit for dash 2020, A Missile View Lift Station 725 Buffalo Road.
I got a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Mayor and council, as it's approaching 10:30, you'll have to take a vote to continue. Staff recommends that we table item 12C, the Draft 2040 Comprehensive Plan. I believe we can get through the remaining items, but I don't think you'll be able to get to that one tonight.
You were saying yes?
I agree with that.
I'm just having, we talking about?
The, the Comprehensive Plan discussion, as, as you received your initial presentation, it seemed to me that council had several questions, and as it's getting late, the Comprehensive Plan's a pretty important document that we would like council's direction, so I think they'd rather have you table it during this one, and then get, get Brad out of here, and we'll get, bring him back to the next one.
All right, first thing we need to do is extend the meeting, how far?
Sir, I would recommend 30 minutes, I think we can get, get through these.
Do I have a motion to do that? Vice Mayor Nelson?
I'd make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second with discussion.
Discussion.
I'm just looking at, I'm wondering if we can table the Sandpoint Park fencing as well, and what about the residential solid waste charges unless that one's time-sensitive? And then that would just leave the...
Yeah, none, none of those are time-sensitive.
So that might, if you guys want to do that. So basically going through the rest of the...
Yes, yes, ma'am, what you're saying is table 11A, which is Sandpoint fencing.
Yes.
Table 12C, which is the Draft 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Yes.
And table the 12B, advisability to transition residential solid waste to the tax roll.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so table 12B, 12C.
And 11A.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston put in a card that if any other decisions was made, he wanted to be able to speak on it, so I just want to let you know.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure, yeah, sure.
That would just leave the lift stations and I think the technical manual.
Yeah, there'll be two, two first readings and the two lift station CUPs.
Which should be relatively quickly, in my opinion.
And of course, a couple of reports from the, your, your council.
Okay, so if, if we're going to make a vote on this, then we have to take cards.
It's administrative, according to your rules, if you want to continue the meeting past 10:30, you have to do, make a motion to do that. That's not a proposition for you, that's a rule, so you would have a motion to continue the meeting to a time certain. If you want to table items tonight to a next meeting, you, you would have a motion to table the item to a time certain, and then any cards that are on those items will be heard when those items are heard to the date they're tabled.
So they won't be heard now?
Well, you wouldn't hear it, because it's not if it's taped, and there's no discussion on the tape.
But if we vote to table them, is there cards called for that?
Not on a motion to table, that's not, but any cards on those items tabled would carry over to the next meeting, and they would be able to speak on those before you take action on those items.
All right, so the motion is, say it one more time, Member Stokel?
To table items 11A, 12B, and 12C to our next meeting.
We've already had a motion to go past 10:30.
And that would be included, can that be included in the same motion?
I, I would do two, two motions.
So we have to go past, so, did you make the motion for?
It goes at 11 o'clock?
I think.
I did.
Yeah, okay, and you second it.
I'll second that, yes.
With, when she had, in addition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion, and I think we're probably asked what that motion is, but anyway, I have a motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jordan, I think, or was it Vice Mayor?
It was Jolene, yeah.
And I have a second with discussion, or addition, from Member Stokel. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
And now staff recommends that you table items 11A, Sandpoint Park fencing, item 12B, advisability to transition residential solid waste to the tax roll, and item 12C, the Draft 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
I make that motion, Mr. Mayor?
To, to, to your next meeting, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay.
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
On to item 9E, which is CUP 4-220B. The applicant, Ashley Smith, on behalf of the City of Titusville is requesting a conditional use permit for the storage or use of regulated substance in the area of critical concern in order to install an emergency generator at the sanitary lift station located at 88 North Carpenter Road, South Lake Plant Lift Station. With council's permission, I'm not going to read the background information about FEMA as, as they're all the same, unless you'd like to hear that again.
No.
No, okay. At the January 13th, Titusville Environmental Commission considered this and voted 6-0 unanimously to approve with the following conditions: The city explored the feasibility of purchasing other generators with alternative fuels, as listed on the last one. Two, if the generator uses diesel fuel, remains the preferred options, add a concrete lip to the concrete pad where the generator is to be installed. And three, staff from Stormwater Division will explore the issues raised by the public regarding the possible, possible retention area and work within Bevard County issues are related to the city-owned property noted as the subject property for this item. On January 20th, 2020, Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request and approved it 7-0 with three conditions. First condition, obscure the view, tanks of the generators from the street view with some type of screening. Number two, research the feasibility of a third level of containment. And three, include the Titusville Environmental Commission's recommendations to research the alternate fuel sources. And Ashley's here to answer questions that you may have.
I have nothing further to add than what I stated before.
Yeah, and I think that's how it's gonna go, but council, Member Jordan, I see you up there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, any questions for staff? All right, we call the cards.
Stan Johnston?
860 Point Set Avenue, Registered Professional Engineer, and I oppose this, you're voting on this because, as far as I'm concerned, this is a very corrupt government, and the corruption is bad, as far as I'm concerned, so as far as the, I have, have had lengthy discussion on this particular item when at the TEC meeting, which you can prefer to, you can ask her about it. But what you've done is you've, you've disgraced me, and you've dishonored me, and you feel very comfortable about it. I don't, I'm not pleased with it at all. It's nasty, it's dirty, and I, I just feel like you're just nothing but scum, and that's what we've elected, and that's what we have for our city manager, our city attorney, for 23 months now. Y'all just treated me like dirt, and you have no conscience about it. You feel very fine about it. Well, I don't. That's why I, I don't, don't respect you for it, not at all. The city manager is just, he's, he's lied repeatedly about many things. And I'll tell you what I've done, is for about two weeks now, I, I called your number, called your number, I'm, I'm not talking about Mr. Robinson now, I called, called your number every day, two weeks, no response, and guess what? You know what Virginia Blalock told me about three days into it, she said, "Listen." I asked her, "Did you, did you send my message to, to the, to the mayor and council members?" And here's what she said, she said, "They don't want to talk to you." And I said, so I asked her the same question, "They really don't even want to talk to you." So I asked her that again, and, and she said, "The council members, they don't want to talk to you." She wouldn't answer the question, "Did you ever, did you ever give him my messages to call her?" She lied. Well, I'm not, not lying, but what she's saying is that, is that she doesn't have to even return my calls to you, because y'all told her, "Hey, don't even, don't even let, we don't, not even interested in it." So, so here's what I'm getting, the message I get, "You don't even read my emails." I don't, I, that's what, that's what I've been told, you don't read my emails either. So anyhow, I'm just still treated like trash and dirt, and I don't respect you, and I hope to get you in court someday. I hope somebody gets you in court, because they'll use their affidavits against you. We got, you got the affidavit of fraud, you got the affidavit of lack of common sense and disregard for human life. I hope they, these are used against you, I certainly hope so, 'cause someday, you're gonna be questioned, is, are you telling the truth, or are you perjuring? And right now, you're lying, you're lying. May I have another minute, please?
I see none.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are on to the, you can make the motion, right?
Yep.
I'll make a motion, please, on 9E.
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve 9E, conditional use permit, number 4-2020B, South Lake Plant Lift Station, 88 North Carpenter Road.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor, roll call, vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously. 9F, city manager?
On to 9F, CUP 4-2020C. The applicant, Ashley Smith, on behalf of the City of Titusville is requesting a conditional use permit for the storage or use of a regulated substance in the area of critical concern in order to install emergency generators at the sanitary lift station located at 4972 Sisson Road, Imperial States 2 Lift Station. And with council's permission, I will not read the background information about the FEMA grants and why we're doing this. The TEC considered this request on, at the 13 January 2020 meeting, their conditions are the same as the previous two. On January 20th, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request, approved it 7-0 with the four conditions of the previous two CUPs.
Okay, staff, I'm sure you have no more to add. Council probably has no more questions, and so we are up to the, call the cards again.
Stan Johnston?
Yep. Well, we plan, need support, let me pick up my pen first. Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, and I'm a Registered Professional Engineer.
One member was not present during the vote. This is your first reading. Ms. Bisaka is available to answer questions that you may have.
Member Robinson?
Um, thank you. This is just the putting everything under one umbrella, is it not?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, any other council questions for staff? Call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston?
I thought you said have a good night. Got one to go.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm a professional engineer, and on this particular item is that I'm opposed to council acting upon this item, and that as far as this item goes, it's I have neither response for it. But what the city has done is that I've been explaining to you for 23 months, it's been pretty crude, and maybe you're getting to feel what I feel after hearing for it for a little bit. And you don't like to hear about it, although you like to hear about the trees, because you spoke for about 20 minutes on the trees. But as far as what you've done, for example, about these spraying people and so forth like that, you've completely ignored that. And that's 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 something that is my profession, is is not just to protect the trees, but the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And the the particular item that I just that I read to you is about the affidavit of a lack of common sense and disregard for human life is a recorded document now, and you have a copy of it there. And it mentions the names of the people. And I should mention them to you because it didn't get them all. It's City Manager Scott Larice, that's Rotarian. Mr. Sean Stauffer, PE, Director of Water Resources, City Attorney Richard Broome, who goes to the same church I go to, Mayor Dan Diesel and Coach, Councilmember Attorney Jolene Nelson, Councilmember Dr. Sarah Stokoe, and Councilmember Engineer Robert Jordan Jr., also Chairman of the Board of Directors of Parish Hospital. So if there's any corrections I need to make to this, I'm certainly looking forward to it. But you've completely ignored, I mean, you've taken your concern about the trees, but you have concern, very little concern about this. Mentioned the health of burning ears, burning eyes, burning throat, headache, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea. Well, it's, I don't know where your priorities are, but they certainly don't, they seem to be very misplaced, because the health of the people is is important. And I don't know whether, I think that your your children would be would be disturbed to hear that their parents would would let this go for over a month of of people being sprayed with them. I got car, my car was 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 covered with the spray. I got, they got a photo of it. I'll send you a photo of it. Of my car was covered with sewage spray. I didn't know about it. I drove home, and then two hours later or so, I went to drive again, and my, I could hardly see through my windshield. Huh. That shocked the heck out of me. But so I left this, I left this, I left the windshield. May I have another minute, please?
I see none.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, where were we? Okay, this is a first reading, correct?
Correct, sir.
No action needed. City manager?
On to 10B. This is ordinance number 6, 2021, Technical Manual Codification, first reading.
This is ordinance number 6, 2021, in ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter 30, Article 1, General Provisions, by creating Division 4 Technical Manuels, Section 30-8 Technical Manuels, incorporating the Development Review Procedures Technical Manual, Environmental Protection Technical Manual, Hazardous Materials Technical Manual, Landscaping Technical Manual, Stormwater Management Technical Manual, Transportation Infrastructure Technical Manual, and Concurrent Technical Manuels in the Land Development Code, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by city council on February 9, 2021, at your 6:30 meeting. And on your agenda, it says the planning and zoning did recommend approval. They have not seen this, nor will they.
Very good. Staff? Council questions of staff? Call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston?
Thank you.
Stan Johnston, a registered professional engineer since 1976, examined.
Start the clock.
Pardon?
Thank you. She didn't start the clock. Go ahead.
Okay. Examined in in mechanical and civil engineering, and been licensed for as a professional land surveyor. Dean's List when I went to college, Engineering Honorary Society, let's see, Tal Beta Pi Engineering Honorary Society and so forth. And also taught seven courses at Brevard Community College in technical engineering. So I'm here to oppose your voting on this, because you have decided that I am a worthless, stupid, incompetent engineer from a from a $70,000 report prepared by GeoSyn-tax engineers in 2019 that says I'm just worthless and stupid and all that. Well, the report doesn't exist, so you're lying. You're liars. So I just wonder, how's it, how does it feel being called a liar by someone who's telling the truth? I don't know how it feels. Well, because I'm not in your shoes. The thing is, what I've been, what I'm shoes is is that I'm being told lies and lies and lies while I tell the truth, and I still get dirt slapped in my face. Who cares? Well, certainly you guys don't care, but me and my family, they care. And I believe the public cares, too. They want the truth, and you're not giving the truth. So anyhow, we go on, we're going to go on after this meeting the same way. And he's going to get paid $160,000, over $160,000. Each of them got paid in 2019, over $160,000. And what you're doing is you're paying for is, is lies. You're not paying for the truth. I can't imagine you're wasting money like you're doing. I mean, you're wasting money. I was, last meeting, January 12, you had three police officers sitting next to me. There was two other police officers there, at least. What in the world kind of wasting money is that? I can't believe what you guys are doing. I hope Mr. Robinson is watching. It's a, it's an eye full, an ear full for him. I can't believe that these wonderful Rotarians and Chairman of the Board of Parish Hospital, what in the world? What does their family think of what they're doing? It's amazing, amazing. Golly, I don't know how many years I've been to the same Sunday School class with Mr. Broome's parents and so forth, and he's doing what he's doing. I bet they don't know a thing about it. Of course, his dad's not here anymore. But I've had great respect for the Broome family until now. So anyhow, Sarah Stokoe, by golly, and Mr. Jordan, he used to go to the same church. So anyhow, my family, so.
Time's up.
Okay, may I have an extra minute?
I'll see you. All right, that was 10B, right?
Yep.
Another first reading, no action required. City manager, where are we going?
Sorry, sir?
Where are we headed?
Okay, so you've tabled Sandpoint Park fencing, 11A. You've tabled 12B. You've tabled 12C. So we're at mayor and council reports. And under my report, I do have two action items.
All right, my, at this point, I'm simply going to go with my report is in the agenda. Is there any other council person that needs to talk about their report? Vice Mayor Nelson?
I do need to talk. And I hate to to say this, but I attended the first Affordable Housing, what do they call it, Advisory Committee? And that was something we talked about last year. And I think they asked for, you asked, well, to ask for a volunteer, and everybody stepped back except me. I think it was one of those. And I don't don't mind doing it, but I got to tell you, I think Member Robinson is probably the better person to do this. I haven't said that to him yet, but apparently he is intimately knowledgeable about it. Am I right? So they are looking for us to put together a committee and discuss housing initiatives, which I can do, but I just sort of thought I should bring it up. And I apologize because I didn't say anything to Mr. Robinson about it.
No, you did not.
Unfortunately, I'm sitting at this end of the diets. But I don't know how Mr. Robinson feels about it, but it just seemed like you were the better person talking to him.
When's your next meeting?
It's not till May.
Well, then, we certainly have some time to discuss that with Mr. Robinson.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's sort of hard if to discuss it with him, other than being up here and discussing it.
Then get ready for your next meeting.
Do you have any, if I'm, if I'm, yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Anything, any information on it, and we'll talk.
What you might be able to do is whoever, somebody else who's on the committee, or whoever maybe had, maybe they could send him some information or call him, and that, because you can't talk to him.
Because I can't talk to him.
Exactly. So that might be the best way to do it.
We'll have Terry send the.
Okay. Yeah, Terry sent, that would be good.
Good idea.
Well, you know, I would, yeah.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
Member Jordan?
I didn't realize it, but January 18, 1986, I was a project engineer in the fire room.
Oh.
And was the project manager on the Challenger accident. And 11 minutes after the shuttle was launched, we lost some really good people. And so we're going to, I hate to say, celebrate in 30, 36 years, 35 years of them being gone. But, you know, it's amazing to me that you do a lot of things in your career, and you never think that you're going to be part of something that where people have died, and all you want to do would be a good engineer. I remember that time, because after the explosion, they locked us in in the fire room. And during the explosion, you could actually, it was carpeted floors, but you could actually hear a pin drop on the carpet. It was so quiet, and it was the scariest sound I've ever heard in my life. And after that, I walked back over to my office. They locked us in the in the fire room. And a few hours later, after they confiscated all our paperwork, they let us go back to the office. And I remember my my supervisor, every time I would see him, he said, I remember what you said after you came back to the office. And I said, what did I say? And I said, now what do I do? And I ended up leaving Florida and going home to my parents for a week, because I was totally lost. I couldn't believe that something like this would happen. Nobody could imagine something like this could happen. But I just want to honor Gregory Jarvis and Rhonda McNair, Ellison Anazuka, Judas Resnick, Dick Scobie, Michael Smith, and who was going to be our first teacher in space, Krista McAuliffe. So it was a sad time, but these people gave their lives for us as Americans and for science. And so on January 20, I just want you all to remember that that was the day that we lost some great Americans. So that's all, that's my report.
To to add to that, and I'm not sure what the situation is with you, but I will be at the memorial, Astronaut Memorial, on Saturday morning. And yeah, I'll leave it at that. But I have a very small speaking part, because I'm going to keep it small. But you're right, and that's very special. And quite honestly, when you see, I see the people who are there, and I said this to them last year, the people who are there, in a lot of ways, not all of them, but a lot of them are in their 80s, and they worked, you know, with these astronauts, because it goes back, you know, to the Apollo days, Apollo 1, Gus Grissom, and, gosh, I'm forgetting the other one. But anyway, certainly, I feel like those folks, and in your case. Am I right? So they are looking for us to put together a committee and discuss housing initiatives, which I can do, but I just sort of thought I should bring it up and I apologize because I didn't say anything to Mr. Robinson about it.
No, you did not. I am sorry. If you did not.
Unfortunately, I'm sitting at this end of the diets. But I don't know how Mr. Robinson feels about it, but it just seemed like you were the better person talking to him.
When's your next meeting?
It's not till May.
Well, then we certainly have some time to discuss that with Mr. Robinson.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's sort of hard if, to discuss it with him other than being up here and discussing.
Then get ready for your next meeting.
Do you have any, if I'm, if I'm, yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Anything, any information on it and we'll, we'll talk.
What you might be able to do is whoever, somebody else who's on the committee or whoever maybe had, maybe they could send him some information or call him and that, because you can't talk to him.
Because I can't talk to him.
Exactly. So that might be the best way to do it.
We'll have Terry send a.
Okay. Yeah, Terry sends, that would be good.
Good idea.
Well, you know, yeah.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
Member Jordan.
I didn't realize it, but January eighteenth, nineteen eighty-six, I was a project engineer in the firing room.
Oh.
And was the project manager on the Challenger accident. And eleven minutes after the shuttle was launched, we lost some really good people. And so we're going to, I hate to say, celebrate in thirty, thirty-six years, thirty-five years of, of them being gone. But, you know, it's amazing to me that you do a lot of things in your career and you never think that you're going to be part of something that, where people have died and all you want to do would be a, a good engineer. I, I remember that time because after the explosion, they locked us in, in the firing room. And during the explosion, you could actually, it was carpeted floors, but you could actually hear a pin drop on the carpet. It was so quiet and it was the scariest sound I've ever heard in my life. And after that, I walked back over to my office, they locked us in the, in the firing room. And a few hours later, after they confiscated all our paperwork, they let us go back to the office. And I remember my, my supervisor, every time I would see him, he said, I remember what you said after you came back to the office. And I said, what did I say? And I said, now what do I do? And I ended up leaving Florida and going home to my parents for a week because I, I was totally lost. I couldn't believe that something like this would happen. Nobody could imagine something like this could happen. But I, I just want to honor Gregory Jarvis and Rhonda McNair, Ellison Anazuka, Judas Resnick, Dick Scobie, Michael Smith, and who was going to be our first teacher in space, Krista McAuliffe. So it was a sad time, but these people gave their lives for us as Americans and for science. And so on January twentieth, I just want you all to remember that that was the day that we lost some great Americans. So that's all, that's my report.
To, to add to that, and I'm not sure what the situation is with you, but I will be at the memorial, Astronaut Memorial on Saturday morning. And yeah, I'll leave it at that, but I have a very small speaking part because I'm going to keep it small. But you're right, and that's very special. Quite honestly, when you see, I see the people who are there, and, and I said this to them last year, the people who are there, in a lot of ways, not all of them, but a lot of them are in their, their eighties and they, they worked, you know, with these astronauts because it goes back, you know, to the Apollo days, Apollo one, Gus Grissom, and, gosh, I'm forgetting the other one. But anyway, certainly I feel like those folks, and in your case, I could add that as well, but those folks that went through the NASA security hats every day and showed their badge like my dad did for his entire career. And that's how we're here. In nineteen sixty-five, he came down with the Gemini program. And I remember where I was for every one of those lost astronauts, the first one, Apollo, yeah, it was Apollo one. We were at a, we were at Tyusville High School, but it was Jackson Junior High against Parkway Junior High basketball game. And didn't have cell phones then, so people came in and told, and all these guys, my dad and many, many others, had to leave the game and get to work. I don't know what they did exactly, but they got to work. So yeah, if you've lived here long enough or if you were in your position, it's a bit of a family situation. So anyway, I thought I'd add that. And then tomorrow, Police Chief Lau and I, we go to a homeless discussion over at Harriet Timore. And, you know, that's a whole nother Apollo X. Anybody else have anything? And if not, we, Member Robinson.
Yes, I spent a little time last Saturday talking to minority business owners that are trying to be entrepreneurs and trying to set themselves over at the, the, what is it, center on Sycamore, the Sycamore?
Gibson?
Gibson Center. So they had a little program and they're going to try to do it a couple of times a quarter and it'd be nice to give them some encouragement and, and support.
That's awesome. That's awesome. And you're the guy to do that. City Manager.
Yes, sir. I have two action items. The first is council's direction on the twenty twenty-one legislative priorities. We've provided you a copy of your legislative priorities from last year that we gave to the county delegation. Staff is requesting to submit your updated, if you'd like to make any changes to the twenty twenty-one.
Speaking from here, and I see Member Robinson, I'll get, get to you.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I, I feel like what we sent last year is if we could just continue to work on those, some of them would make us a lot better and safer in some of our roadways, et cetera. Anybody else have anything? I don't want to speak for everybody. Exactly. I'd like to just continue to do that.
Okay, we'll forward, just change the date and, and forward it. Next is in January of each year, staff begins planning stages for the student awards ceremony that we conduct in May. Due to the pandemic, the theater manager of the Performing Arts Center at the high school has advised that half of the seats in the auditorium cannot be used and six feet separation must be maintained. Based on this information and the total number of students that will recognize this year, staff is recommending we cancel this event and prepare certificates to the deserving children that were going to be recognized and get it to the school for distribution.
I would certainly agree with that. I'd be surprised if nobody did. But if you have any question, I went to a Tyusville High School concert, long meeting, I'm losing my voice, but, and it was that same percentage and it looked empty. It just wasn't, it was just, it was almost sad. These kids are up there playing their hearts out and there's this, it almost looks like nobody's there. So I like, I don't want to discontinue the recognition from the city to them, but, you know, when I was discussing with City Manager, I'm sure you guys thought the same thing. I said, heck, think about it, you know, we shook everybody's hand. You know, you can't do that anymore. So right now, I think we just have to put it on hold and do the way we're doing. I, I would agree. Can we just give you consensus or we need to vote?
Sorry, I just, I don't think you need to vote. I hear consensus.
Thank you.
And for the safety of our children as well.
Absolutely. Is there anything else?
No, sir. Concludes my report. Any questions for me?
I have no questions. Any questions? I don't see any here. City Attorney? We have none. Counsel, if you're good to go and you want to get out of here before midnight?
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.